I'd like to call the order of the joint workshop of December 17th, 2018. First on the agenda, you have Casey Leonard and Runud Kirstein and Jill Eastman that are going to provide the fiscal year 2018 audit presentation. So, we're right here. Did I miss anyone?
Good evening. I'm also here with Tim Gale. He was actually the senior manager on the audit.
Thank you.
So, the audit this year went very well. A big thank you to Jill Eastman, to Adam Hanson, to Jackie Smith within the school finance office. It was a pleasure working with everyone this year and things went very, very well. Similar to what we've done in the past, I've put together a little presentation which I'm going to go through and as I do so, if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me at any point. So, the first graph here has a summary of the audit results. In terms of the timing of the audit, we just recently finished the audit, so our report is dated December 11th. As for the opinion on the financial statements, the city, which includes the school department, received an unmodified opinion, which means the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, so it was a clean opinion. In addition to the financial statement audit, we also performed two separate compliance audits. We performed an audit in accordance with government auditing standards. It's what we usually call a yellow book audit. And here, we considered the city's internal controls over the financial reporting process, so all the procedures that are in place that help to ensure that the year-end balances are materially correct. We also performed tests of the city's compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. And I'm glad to say, in terms of that yellow book audit, we had no material weaknesses, nor did we have any significant deficiencies, so we had a clean opinion there. And then because the city and the schools spent more than $750,000 worth of federal grant proceeds in the current year, it had a separate audit in accordance with the uniform guidance. It's what we usually call a single audit. And this really is, it's a program-specific audit, so in the current year, we tested two separate school grants. We tested the child nutrition cluster and the local entitlement cluster, and I'm glad to say, we had no findings. So, we had a clean opinion there. So, a clean opinion on the financial statements and a clean opinion on the two compliance reports. We did have a number of recommendations, which we will go through at the end of the presentation. Now, before we dive into the numbers, I will mention that again, in 2017, so in the prior fiscal year, the city submitted their financial statements to the Governmental Financial Officers' Association for participation in their CAFER program. CAFER stands for Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. This is a voluntary program. It's a program that the city has participated in for 25 consecutive years. And the 2017 submission received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This is a pretty prestigious award. There are well over 200 governments in the state of Maine that could participate in that program, and there's usually 15 to 20 that do on a regular basis, including the city of Auburn. So, the 2017 submission received that award. We're very hopeful that the 2018 statements will also receive that award. We won't find out until next, it usually comes in in May, so it takes them some time to go through that report.
Trophy. Do we get a large trophy?
I don't think you get a trophy anymore. You used to get a trophy. You get a coin.
We have a granite plaque that has the years, all the years on it. So, we have, we come into the finance office, you can see all of the original plaques that we got, but for the last probably eight years, we've only gotten the...
Budget cuts.
Yeah.
Well, first of all, congratulations. Good job. Thank you very much.
Again, kudos to Jill and her staff for making that happen. There's a lot of work that goes into that. So, on the next graph, we start to dive into some of the numbers for the year. This first graph shows a general fund, fund balance analysis for 2014 through 2018. Fund balance represents the equity position for the city, and we take fund balance and we carve it up into four different categories. So, we have non-spendable fund ballots, restricted fund ballots, assigned fund ballots, and unassigned fund balance. Non-spendable fund balance represents resources which cannot be spent because they're not in a spendable form. Specifically, what we're talking about here are long-term receivables, amounts in escrow, and prepaid expenditures. Those amounts can't be easily converted to cash, so we're required to put them into that non-spendable category. Restricted fund balance comprises resources with constraints placed on their use externally, so these are amounts that have strings attached to them. And specifically, what this represents is the school department's general fund, fund ballots. Because the school is supported through state education subsidy, and those amounts have to be used on educating your students, any remaining balances have to be put into that restricted category. Assigned fund balance represents resources that are constrained by the city's intent to be used for specific purposes, so these are amounts that the council sets aside. Most notably, in 2018, this included $412,000 set aside to balance the 2019 budget. It also included approximately $1.1 million set aside for self-insurance. And then, unassigned fund balance is what remains after amounts are recognized in the three other categories. That's essentially what's left over. Between 2017 and 2018, total fund balance increased by about $1.1 million to equal So, fund balance is going in the right direction. The next four graphs are budget actual comparisons, so we're comparing the actual results to what was budgeted for the year. The first two are citywide, the last two are just for the school departments, we carve out the school department. So, this first graph shows general fund revenues, and just a few observations. Taxes were over budget by about $332,000, primarily due to higher-than-expected excise taxes and registrations. In 2018, the city increased the budget for excise taxes, and the revenue for the year still outpaced the estimate. Intergovernmental revenues were over budget by about $280,000, primarily due to higher-than-expected state education subsidy and Bette reimbursements. Charges for services for the city were under budget by about $533,000 due to a large number of EMS fee write-offs in the current year. And that's, that can be directly correlated with the city's implementation of a new EMS policy to manage those revenues or that billing process. The other thing I wanted to point out on this graph is that if you look in the budget column, there is use of surplus for both the city and the school, and you can see there's no actual amount, and that's because in 2018, the city and the school chose to use a portion of their fund balance to balance the budget, so it's not an actual new revenue source. You're using your fund balance, you're using your resources. The next graph shows general fund expenditures. In total expenditures for the city were about $2.7 million under budget. General government expenditures were under budget by $1,340,000, primarily due to lower-than-expected economic development salaries, as well as professional services related to economic development. Public service expenditures were over expended by about $220,000, and that was primarily due to increased fire department wages and benefits. And other appropriations were under budget by $581,000, and that was primarily due to lower-than-expected interest on long-term debt, as well as a budgeted but unused emergency reserve, and that was equal to $415,000. Then the next graph shows general fund revenues, and this is for the school department only. Nation expenditures were over budget by $484,000 due to higher-than-expected out-of-district tuition. And finally, facilities maintenance expenditures were under budget by $775,000, and that was primarily due to lower-than-expected costs for natural gas, cautious spending on supplies, and conservative budgeting for debt expenditures. On the next graph, we have unassigned fund balances, a percentage of budget. This is one of those metrics or measurements that we use to determine if a community is financially healthy. We generally recommend one to two months' worth of expenditures, which equals 8.3% to 16.7%. And so, when we do this calculation for the city, as of the end of the fiscal year, it equaled 9.65%. So, the city's in the range of what we usually recommend. It's on the lower end of the range, but it's in the range of what we usually recommend. Now, the city does have a fund balance policy, and that's to maintain unassigned fund balance, a 12.5% of general fund expenditures, as measured on a basis consistent with generally accepted accounting principles. And when we did that calculation for this year, that percentage equaled 9.53%, so the city's falling short of that threshold. The good news is that I went back a few years and looked, and the trend is going in the right direction. So, if you look at 2017, that percentage was 9.06%, and for 2016, it was 7.73%. And so, you know, through management and the council's direction of fund balance or management of fund balance, we're seeing that, you know, you're getting closer to that 12.5% threshold that is part of that policy. On the next graph, we have revenue distribution, local versus state. This schedule shows the two single largest revenue sources for the city, that being taxes and intergovernmental revenues. Together, they make up about 97% of the total revenues in the general fund for the city in 2018. Taxes include real and personal property taxes, as well as excise taxes. And intergovernmental revenues primarily represent state education subsidy, state revenue sharing, and Bette and homestead reimbursements. And over the five years presented here, you can see, things have been pretty consistent. We started putting this graph in for a lot of our clients, because what we saw is that state revenue sharing and state education subsidy was decreasing quite a bit, and what that meant is the portion that was being covered by your local property taxes was increasing, and the intergovernmental revenues were decreasing. Not the case for Auburn. It's actually, you know, as you can see, it's very consistent throughout the years. I have some clients where I've seen 10% swings, you know, over that period of year, or over that period of time. Another comparative in terms of revenues, this has, shows revenue distribution for property taxes. And what this graph shows is the breakdown of property taxes between the municipal side of the city and the school department. In 2018, 59% of the property taxes went towards the city, and 41% went towards education. And as you can see, there has been somewhat of a shifting, so between 2014 and 2018, the percentage that related to education increased by about 3%, whereas the city portion decreased by about 3%. So, somewhat of a shift there. And then the final two graphs show pie charts for expenditures, somewhat of a different representation or visualization of your expenditures. If you look at 2018, we can see the three largest categories were education at 50%, general government at 13%, and public safety at about 12%. And if you look at 2017, things are, things are very consistent, within 1% for most of the categories. Education is your largest at 50%, followed by general government and public safety. Pretty consistent with what we see for a lot of our clients, too. You know, at least our clients that have municipal school departments. Those were all of the graphs. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the school committee or city council on this? One question, just go back to a little bit on, if you could, please, on fund balance. You said something to the effect of, obviously, our fund balance has been increasing, which is positive. I believe it's by charter for the city of Auburn, correct me if I'm wrong, that we, our goal is 12.5%? Or is that ordinance?
Policy.
Just policy? Thank you. So, policy at 12.5%. What seems to be the, you alluded to the norm with your other clients.
Sure.
It's, I don't think it's as high as 12.5. And could you just talk for a second about the pros and cons of trying to achieve a 12.5 versus a current, I think it's 9-point-something?
Sure. I mean, I mean, there's all sorts of reasons for having a positive fund balance. You know, at 9.65%, that, honestly, for a municipality that's the size of Auburn, that's a service, kind of a service center-type municipality, that's, that's probably pretty normal, I would think. You know, we have clients that have these percentages anywhere from 3%, 2%, all the way up into the 20s. But for the larger municipalities, they tend to be under 10%, I would say. Would you agree, Tim?
Yeah, that's what I've seen. Yeah, if you go to some of the smaller towns, yeah, they'll have fund balances that are up in the 20s. It's a little easier for them to put that away.
And we do have a few clients that are in the 20s, that the town of Falmouth is well into the 20s. You know, it's their choice in terms of how they manage, but, you know, obviously, it's very important to have, you know, a strong fund balance. You know, the economy's been pretty good lately, but there's going to be a point where it's not going to be good. And we really saw that when you looked back to 2008, 2009, a lot of our clients' fund balance was just really decimated. A lot of our clients didn't want to raise taxes, and so, significant hit to fund balance. You know, now's the time, and the economy's been pretty good, to build up fund balance, because there is going to be a point where, you know, the rainy days are going to come, unfortunately. But 9.65%, relatively speaking, I think is pretty good, you know, despite falling short of where the policy is.
Okay. Thank you.
We were low, and the city was low in their fund balance, two, three years ago. Mr. Stone, when he was on the audit committee, we were crazy to get it rebuilt as fast as we could. So, you've done an excellent job.
Yeah, and one of the things, too, in the past, it all depends on what's going on with inflation and inflationary times. I mean, because I've seen the past few budgets where we have 3% to 5% increases in spending, when it's 1.5% or 1%. And now, but there was a time when there was, inflation rate was 6%, 8%. So, councils in the past have said, well, you know, in order to help with the property tax situation, they've used some of the fund balance to lower property taxes because of that. We've been lucky that we haven't had those increases, although we've had increases. So, hopefully, we won't have to raid the fund balance ever again to lower property taxes until we get to a rate, a level where we feel comfortable.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Will you be getting into areas that are all about areas of concern or areas where we need to do a better job? Because when I, I've had audits and the work I've done, and what we've done is had our goals established for the following year based on areas that need improvement. So, can you...
That was a great lead-in, because that's exactly what we're going to do right now.
Segue.
That's what Tim's going to do.
Yeah. Casey saved the fun part for me. He gets to be the good guy. Not that there's anything bad to go over. Casey mentioned earlier that we, we have compliance audits that we do, and as part of the regular audit process, we look at your internal controls of the city and the school department. We look at those internal controls, those procedures, as a way to assess the risk within the city and the school department, so that we can focus our other testing in areas where we think are, you know, where we're going to find some issues. And when we do that, we can offer you some recommendations. We have no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies that we're required to report to you, but we do have some other comments, some best practices that we like to communicate to you, and hopefully, we'll get those implemented by next year, and we'll see improvements there. So, the first of those comments being the use of the school department tax ID number. This is a common issue that we see throughout the state with school departments and activity funds. Booster clubs will get their hands on the tax ID number of the school department, and they'll start opening up accounts to raise funds, to help out the football team, or whatever it may be. And ultimately, if they're using the tax ID number of the school department, they should be reporting to the school department, and the school department should be monitoring that. In this instance, we found eight unknown accounts that the school, school department wasn't aware of, and they weren't monitoring them. A total of $15,000 total across the eight accounts, so not a big dollar amount, but nevertheless, that does open up the city and the school department to some liability there if, you know, something should happen. So, to my knowledge already, as there were discussions earlier today, those accounts have either been closed or brought underneath the umbrella of the school department, so those have already been corrected. Within the Edward Little High School Activity Fund, we tested the cash receipt process, how they bring the money in for the various activities, and we also cash, tested the cash disbursement process, how they control their expenditures. Within the receipt process, we tested 40 transactions. 33 of the 40 were deposited in a manner that we wouldn't consider timely. The school's policies are deposit funds received within 48 hours. We found, again, 33 out of 40 weren't deposited within that required policy 48-hour limit. We recommend 48 hours. It's the best practice. A lot of school districts tend to go, they make a policy of once or twice a week because it's more realistic, and there's not a big cash amount being drawn into these funds. So, I believe there's some communication between the central office and the school involved here to maybe either rework the policy or to get those deposits on a more frequent Additionally, at the high school, there were, there were dispersments made for the use of gift cards. It's become a common practice in school activity funds lately to purchase gift cards and then sell them at a discount to raise funds for whatever activity. That's a great way to raise funds, but ultimately, gift cards present a real risk in the sense that, once you purchase those gift cards, they turn into cash, and they're really hard to track. So, we've encountered instances in the past at other places where people are just kind of keeping those gift cards to themselves, and maybe they're not getting to their intended recipients. So, we suggest that if you continue the use of this, purchasing the gift cards to raise funds, maybe there's an additional layer of documentation that's done to have the ultimate recipient sign a form or something of that nature, saying, yes, I did receive these funds, and they did get to their intended recipient. Within the city, we tested the cash disbursement process. Again, we tested 40 transactions. We found four of the 40 transactions were lacking a signature or initials. Those signatures or initials are used to kind of document and verify that there is a secondary review process going on. Anytime we can't verify and see on physical documentation a review process, we get concerned and we're reporting it to you. Again, four out of 40, it doesn't seem like much, but it is statistically significant if we expand that sample to the citywide, that that's quite a few that theoretically are not going checked. So, we recommend that the city continue and follow up with its policy where every cash disbursement gets reviewed, and then the documentation is there to prove that it gets reviewed as well. And the last item that we have is city old outstanding checks. Specifically, within the city's primary account, there were 91 checks that were over six months old, totaling approximately $14,000, some of them dating back to 2006. Anytime there's old outstanding checks, we recommend that the city investigate these items, void the, void the checks in question, reissue them, and if somebody can't be found to cash the check, they go through the process of submitting that, those amounts to the state, so the state can keep it in their unclaimed property fund and seek out the recipient there. Any questions on those comments?
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there a limit on when funds go into the state undispersed, unaccounted-for funds? How, can the state keep it forever?
I'm sorry, is, can the state keep them forever? Essentially, yes. I mean, once you submit them to the state, the state is responsible for tracking that down, and they send out notices annually to say, if you see your name on this list, please come claim your property. But there is a lot that does go unclaimed.
It's a great website the state maintains, too, that you can punch in your name and address. I just got, you know, some checks for about 400 bucks, going way back to the 90s, so it's there, it's real, so...
Great. Thank you.
You know, that's my money, too. You can't have any, Holly.
So, a year from now, we're going to be referring to this again, because that's my process.
Every year, as part of the audit process, we follow up on all of these comments, and we retest all of these areas to make sure that there's been improvement, and if there is not, we'll report it to you.
Thank you.
Is there anything that you saw during your audit process about the city and the school side that while falls under the, your version of general accounting, accepted accounting principles, seemed to be not in the norm with other municipalities or school departments around the state and your client base? Is there something that said, okay, yeah, that's right, but we've never really seen this before?
Not that I recall, Casey. I don't think...
No, no. I mean, I think that if there was something that was very odd, you know, we'd probably report it in a recommendation, and, I mean, unless it was, you know, a valid process. But no, there's, I don't think there's anything that comes to mind.
So, and if you could, just for our benefit, a little bit more on the public's benefit, the scope in which you're, obviously, you're working, okay? It's how deep do you actually go into the accounts? Are you looking at, we see a lot of talk about sample sizes, obviously, you know, six out of the last 40 audited, random. Are you going through each line item that would be above, in or out, above $10,000? Or what is, what's the threshold or triggering that you fall under your guidelines?
I don't remember the specific dollar threshold off the top of my head that was specific to the city or the school department, but there is a threshold that is established in any account or balance that's over that threshold, we automatically test, and we dig into that one deeper. And then we look at the smaller ones and kind of figure out, again, that's where we use our risk-based approach, and we figure out, okay, even though this balance may be smaller, is it a risky area? If so, we're going to look into that deeper and request more additional documentation for those accounts. But I can't recall the thresholds off the top of my head, if that's what you're looking for.
Okay. No, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments from either the city council or school committee?
A real quick one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every year, you come back with kindly mentioned recommendations, like you just did. Last year, you came forward with recommendations. Did we follow through and correct your recommendations last year? In other words, you recommended some things, and then when you come in to do the audit this year, did you look to see if we took to heart what you had made for recommendations? And if so, did we follow through on them, or is there still some dangling? Or are those included in what you just now mentioned?
Every year, we issue reports, and we give you these comments, and we classify them, again, whether it's just a best practice recommendation, or if it's a significant deficiency. We follow up on all these comments every year. I was only a little bit involved last year, but I believe most of these comments this year are new comments, so everything that we would have reported to you last year seems to have been corrected. And I know specifically for the uniform guidance testing that we did this year for the child nutrition and local entitlement, there have been no comments in those programs for a couple of years. I think two years ago was paid lunch equity where there was an issue, but that does get followed up on every year, and again, if, if we're an issue again, it would be reported. Casey, can you recall anything that might be hanging out from last year?
I, I think the only one that's a repeat is the, the cash disbursement one. I think, I, yeah, I think there are, there were a few last year where we didn't see sign-offs as approving those dispersments, both in 2018 and 2017. So, I think, I'm pretty sure that's the only one that's a repeat from last year.
Thank you kindly.
I'm, Mr. Mayor, there was, I think the recreation department was mentioned, but it was a lot worse than it is in this report. Is that...
We had one on Norway.
Was it on Norway? I thought it was on the way they were, the computer system didn't link with ours in last year's report. It was like a separate in-house system that we had to find a way to link to the city, but we've since fixed that.
I think you're correct. I think you're correct. Yeah, it wasn't an issue this year.
Right. I mean, they still had a little bit of a sampling that had a couple of late deposits, but we were having issues with the linking of the, what the rec department was using to receive money in their system and our system, but that's been corrected.
They're on MUNIS now.
What the school department does is that when they get a recommendation that needs to be done, it's addressed way back in almost June or August that it's addressed and corrected. And you see in the statement here that ours has been corrected. The appropriate parties have been spoken to, and, and it's been moving on.
There are any other questions? If not, we're going to move on. If not, we're going to move on to our agenda. None being, I'd like to thank you all very much again for your time and we look forward to seeing you and next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. And of course, you're still available for any other questions that might pop up. I mean, obviously, this is a lot of data here, so.
Of course.
All our contact info is right on the front page of that presentation, so if you need to contact us, you can reach us there.
Great. Thank you very much, again.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, I have a presentation by Superintendent Grandin, who will be going over an update on the new high school. So Mrs. Grandin, whenever you're ready. Shifting.
Shifting down. So I'm so pleased to be here with both of you at once so I don't have to repeat myself on Wednesday. So this worked out perfect. There are people in the audience that have had a lot of work with this as well as Councilwoman, Holly, and also David Young has been participating on the building committee as well as Bonnie Hayes and Tom Kendall. So we've had a lot of community members working on our new high school project. So I'm giving you the PowerPoint that Harriman put together for the building committee last Tuesday. And so I'm not an architect, but I'm going to do my best to explain the slides that we'll be seeing so that you have a feel of what we've been discussing at the building committee level, next steps, and also discussing the local dollars, because that has been a big topic since the survey went out. So here's just a reminder, and I don't use PC, so this will be interesting. So this is the schema of the site. This is the current Edward Little High School site with just a picture of where things may go on the site. In orange is the building, and then you'll see where there's parking, what we call the stadium, which is the football field, soccer field, the bleachers, big scoreboard, similar to what we see at Walton, but obviously up to date, and then the soccer, the softball field and the baseball field. So that's just giving you a reminder of what it will look like on the current site. So what we discussed at the last, and I wish it would just go, okay, there we go. What we discussed at the last meeting is Harriman is busy at work, obviously. They have a conference room with all these pictures, these schemas, places they've been, materials they've looked at, at how will we do that concept design? So they took some buildings that we have visited as well as another building that they are aware of that really fits in what we've been discussing as a community, as a building committee and subcommittees. So one is West Bridgewater, which was in Massachusetts. So this is just showing you how it's laid out and where you see those arrows at the end of a line, those are main entrances. So at West Bridgewater, you can see that there's a main street down the middle and the orange blocks show where the cafeteria, lunchroom, the big blue dots on the left-hand side. So everything on the left is community, the blue is the gym, then the cafeteria, then the auditorium, and then to the right in that courtyard are where the classrooms are. So showing a place where would there be community access and where would there be classroom instruction going on. Now we move to Hampden Academy, which is, also did similar, you'll see the arrow coming through, and I can point right here where that arrow is, and that's that main street similar to where the community would access those parts of the building. So their cafeteria, their gymnasium, their cafeteria, I mean, their auditorium. And then here's where the classrooms are. Then you have Mount Blue. Here's their main street down the middle. They have their auditorium here, their gymnasium here, and then they have CTE program that's interspersed. It's this way. This is where they come in. This is their front entrance. So here's their auditorium. Here are their classroom wings. Here's CTE programming. So just kind of giving you a feel of the flows of schools that we've seen, their layouts. Here's Noble High School, which was designed with pods in mind. So you can see here's a pod, here's a pod, but here's where you would walk in and there's community areas here. Then Essex Tech, which is a long school, basically built because of the property line, but it's, has its center area here and then it has classroom wings on either side. And then Sanford High School, which is the newest built high school, you see right here is the main area coming in. They also have a community area over here that is accessed. So this is their gym, their auditorium, their cafeteria, their library, and then these are CTE wings that also have classroom integrated as well. So just looking at different ways that high schools have been laid out. From there, they take the architects, take those layouts and they start to look at accesses. Where are things? What are hubs? And just taking what I just went over and making a picture of that using where are the main hallways, where are the different hubs, where the community is, and laid each one out. So you can see the first one is more of a courtyard look, then the next one where Hampden Academy is a hub. They call that a hub where everything is kind of centrally located. And then you see the Mount Blue, which has a hub access and spokes. So there are classrooms that stick out, classroom wings that stick out from the main street. Then you have Noble, Essex Tech, and Sanford. So they're just looking at how would we lay out our high school on its current, on the site that we're looking at, looking at different models. So then what they shared is the pros and cons of each of those models. So they took the West Bridgewater model and they talked about how there's a clear delineation between the community use, the academic use, the courtyard. What they call wayfinding is a student can be somewhere in the school courtyard and be able to look out a window and say, oh, this is the wing I'm in. So it's very easy for students and staff to get around the building and know where they are. Natural light, protected outdoor space, so you see that courtyard, the public can't get into the courtyard, but students can access that. And then efficiency of the layout and its flexible spacing. So they look at each of those designs. The con is the scalability, expansion, and solar orientation. So they just give the model of, okay, what is, could be a challenge in this type of Then they looked at Sanford, they showed Sanford, and the pros were exterior exposure. You can see all the outside walls. The efficient travel distance, trying to make those spokes short enough that students can come into the main hub and come back out again. Distinct neighborhoods, they have them color-coded, so you know if you're in this blue wing, this is what this wing is. And then they have the integrated CTE pathways. The cons of it is it's a large footprint because it goes way out in different wings. Wayfinding can be con, sometimes you have to understand where you are when you're coming back into the main area. And in the center isn't a lot of windows to the outside, so it can appear to be darker and congested depending on the light, the natural lighting. They also did the pros of Noble High School, that it's a compact footprint, it has neighborhoods and pods, and then has a well-defined central core. The cons, it's inefficient circulation and wayfinding. Because you have to go into these different pods and come back out again, there isn't a direct flow of traffic. So we were reminded of the design statement that was completed by three workshops with staff and community representation, and so this is the design statement, that the new Edward Little High School will be a safe, collaborative, vibrant learning community that is welcoming to all, a place where all learners build aspirations, strive for excellence, and develop agency, personal and interpersonal skills that fosters individual success and enhances the community. A dynamic and flexible state-of-the-art community hub that fosters experienced-based learning. So they take that and really think about the design and are they meeting that statement in the way they lay out the building? They also went through those design patterns that were identified in our group work and the guiding principles and just marked, okay, of the design patterns and of our guiding principles, where do they align? Holly? Were you going to ask something? Okay, so I saw movement.
Oh, no.
You're just going through, okay.
Not yet.
So the, this is the design, they went through three designs with the building committee and then the building committee members turned and talked about which design they saw most represents what we're looking for, the efficiency, everything we talked about. And so the first one is the massing one. So you can see that there's a courtyard here that has classrooms, so the main entry would be here. So on the left-hand side is all the instructional parts of the building. Then they have the cafeteria. Now, within this instructional part, there would be some CTE programs. So all the CTE programs are not down here. There are some here on the main hub, for example, cosmetology. So if there's wanting to be open to help with the community and offering cosmetology, it would need to be in that main entrance. Same with culinary arts possibilities. So there are things here that are CTE programs that don't require an outside access for equipment. Then they have the auditorium art, then, whoops, then the gym, and then at the end, the CTE programmings that need bays. Touching that, I'm sorry. Ooh, I over-touched it. So, and then if Franklin School program is included, there's an area there that they would be included, would be way on the other side, they would have their own entrance, they would have their own space. Not integrated, as I've heard people comment, being integrated. No, they would be totally separate. Their awesome program would be right there where they would live away from the main classrooms. Here's the second design, which has fingers, we called them fingers. So it's, all of the stuff on the right stays the same, and I know I hit something to make that, there we go. So this side stays the same, but what's changing is the instructional area. So the first one, you can see it's a courtyard, the second one, it's fingers, and then the third one, it's in pods, causing three, it's causing two courtyards. So after deliberation, talk, and sharing, the building committee liked number one first, the efficiency, the wayfinding, the natural light, the ability to also expand. So after that, we discussed what's the layout. Now remember, this is way up here, big picture. We're not in the details of where the classrooms are, where things are lined up. This is where would we place them. So this is number one, this is the first floor. So when I talk to you about the culinary art programs, I mean, the CTE programs, they would be in here.
Excuse me, Mrs. Grandin.
Yes.
Potentially, and maybe Peter or Joe could help make it bigger. And I share your frustration with PC.
Yeah.
I'm right there with you.
Especially when you're used to.
A real computer, made by Apple?
Yeah. We all have our.
Brian's.
Brian, thank you. Glad to hear, see you haven't passed out back there. Good. Okay. So as you can see in the different colors, point here, here is the CTE. Here was the, here's CTE programming. Then you have the arts, no, the gymnasium, sorry, the gym, the theater, some more CTE programming, then you have the instructional area going around that courtyard. Okay?
Two-story. I take it on the instructional?
It would be three stories. So I'm going to show you the three stories. That's the first floor. Okay, he's got to come out. We're going to the next slide, Brian. I see what he's doing. Okay, he's going to go down, he's going to slide down. Yep. Okay. So this is the second story. So you can see where the second story ends. It doesn't go as far over to the CTE side. The second, the second floor really goes to help the theater out. That's where the second floor. So it ends as it comes into the gym area. So you can see the gym is in, is here. So the second floor comes to here. So it's behind the stage, the part of the theater, so it can be accessed from the second floor. And then there's the wing. All right, you can go to the next slide, Brian. So what you're not seeing is on that far side, and maybe when he comes by. So here's the third floor. So it looks down on that courtyard over here, and then it has instructional here. So expansion, you know, you have to look at, well, where would you do if you had to add classroom? You could add it on to this side. It's almost like at Park Avenue where they, the classrooms to be added would be on the first floor on top of it. So it would be similar, is that at EL, if you wanted to add, you would add on top of the first floor on that side. So showing that.
Which overlooks the city.
Yes. What's really nice about this layout is all those classrooms would face the city, so it would be a beautiful sight from here, as you would see that, those three stories, and then on the other side. What Harriman talked about is you want to have your gymnasium, your theater near the parking. So it has to be on that side in order to access the parking. And then you have the classrooms on the left-hand side facing outward.
Basically, left-hand side towards the old, the existing gym, as you're looking at the.
Correct. But even more out. So you know the turnaround, where the turnaround is behind the gym, you're off to the left of that, yes. So it would be in that area. On top of it, you're right, it's probably on top of where the gym was going out.
I have to ask, there is access for a lawnmower to get into the courtyard in this new high school versus our existing high school?
Absolutely. That came up at the building committee.
I'm sure it did.
Yes. Yes, we want to make sure that, yes. Mm-hmm.
I take a lot of heat with that from Mr. Hunter. So he thinks I told you.
It's the worst keep secret, kept secret in Auburn, we all know.
Yes. When they closed those two wings, we didn't think through, you close it and forevermore you can't get out there. So we've talked about that a lot. I won't go through these because the building committee really leaned towards the first one. The second one, the issues are because it jets out, you have a lot of space you're trying to cover, safety-wise, landscaping-wise, efficiency-wise. So a lot of discussion on, do we really want to jet out wings and then have students have to walk all the way down the wing, over, down the wing, when we can make it more compact by doing a courtyard? So I won't spend a lot of time on that. So keep going, Brian. See if I can, no. Well, I can do what he's doing, right? No, he's doing it. I could use my computer next time.
He's good at it.
Keep going. That one had two stories. This is Nobles', I mean, not Noble, this is based on kind of the Noble concept, but you can see the courtyards, which is not very efficient. This is a lot of outside wall space. It has a lot of nooks and crannies, so people really felt the first one was the best model. And then that shows the next floor. So getting to the next part. So then what they showed is some outside designs, just to give people a feel of what could the outside of the school look like. So you can just see some of this contemporary look. Keep going. Then you can see some monumental, they call these looks. So there's different ways of what is your outside of your, front of your building going to look like? So these are just models that they were showing the building committee. And then there's the modern look. So here's some examples of how it was done to look more modern. So it just was looking at the different ways you can do a front. So, it just was looking at the different ways you can do a front of a building, what it looks like. Here's expressive, so you can notice a lot of color, landscaping. So, sometimes you can use color to bring out the character of the building. And then this is transitional. Somebody said one of it looked like the Central Maine Medical Center on the upper-left-hand corner. So, you see buildings looking like this, where you see the outside brick. So, we just got kind of a glimpse. We got a glimpse of what the indoors could look like, those different learning spaces. Sometimes it can be done with furniture. Showing other viewpoints of different learning environments, how it's set up. Just giving you a feel for it. On the upper-right-hand corner, you can see what we always refer to Google stairs or Agora stairs, as they're referred to in Sanford. But that's, that's what we're talking about when we mention those, is it's almost an extra meeting space. You can drop a screen. The one in Sanford is, is off the cafeteria. Students were using it when we were there on Friday. A screen can drop, so you can do a small meeting area. They also explained in the auditorium that the way they're wired is anything going on the auditorium, if you, if you had spillover, you could be in that space and watching it. You could be in the gymnasium and watching it. So, they've connected everything, so you can be in different places doing a performance, and people can view it in different places if there isn't enough seating. So, that's an example of that. This is a reminder of where we are in the steps for the state. So, right now, we're in the design concept. So, we're working right now to have, we're, we're beginning it, the concept design. Then you'll see that it has to keep going through reviews of the different departments. Then it has to go the Department of Ed, it has to go to the Board of Education for approval. The public needs to do a straw vote on it, and then the State Board of, the State Board of Education sees it after our public hearing straw vote. The straw vote is on the concept design. It's not on how much it's going to cost. It's more about the layout, do, getting a vision of the layout. So, one thing we talked about is Harriman showing the new layout on what does the current EL have, 'cause it, 'cause we're gaining a lot of, a lot of things in our programming from what we currently have, so showing the public. Right now, this is how much the EL would take of the space, the current EL, and look how much you're getting, you're gaining in this project. And you know what you're gonna see. You're gonna see the second gym, you're gonna see the auditorium, you're gonna see the CTE, you're gonna see the other CTE programs, you're gonna see administrative office. So, there's a lot that we're, we're gaining that EL does not have, a cafeteria, appropriate cafeteria. So, we have a timeline to the June referendum. So, this is to show you where we are in the process. We're still doing. You can ask me a question?
Oh, I just, I have some questions.
Yeah, I'm going to show you the timeline as it comes up.
Okay, great, good. We'll wait till you're complete then.
Okay, then you can ask me. He's going down again. So, can you go up, Brian, start at the beginning, top, the top of the page, yes. Okay, so, we meet with the DOE regularly, as you know, giving them updates, they give us feedback. We're still working on the space allocation, so we had another meeting to go over the space allocation. What we're really trying to do is zero in on the state-funded parts of it and the local-funded. We're still working through that process. Scott and Air, myself, Harriman are gonna continue to work on classrooms, our needs, just to make sure what is being, what are we putting in the space allocation that's gonna be supported, and then we'll go back to DOE. So, they're giving us feedback as we go through this process. We have our building committee meetings, we have our subcommittee meetings, and we have a public forum scheduled for January 23rd, so there'll be postcards going out to do this similar thing that we just did, updating where the building committee is. And then the public hearing straw poll is tentatively scheduled for February 13th, so there'll be information coming out on that. Now, I can keep going, Mayor Levesque, around costs for local that have been discussed. Do you want me to keep going?
Please.
Okay. So, one thing we did talk about is impact of Franklin coming in, coming out, and it really isn't gonna have a large impact. So, if we decide that they stay where they are, it's approximately nine hundred, 9,400 square feet. So, right now, nine, 9,400 square feet is planned for Franklin in the space allocation, which is seven classrooms, an art room, three social worker offices, and an office space. If it's decided that they stay where they are, that just comes out. It doesn't, it doesn't really impact because it's not a large enough space to make a huge impact. So, when Harriman figured out in or out, it's not a huge impact. So, that was just to show everybody what would happen. Holly?
Just a detailed question. Those three social worker rooms that are dedicated to Franklin, are they only for Franklin students?
Yes. It would only be for Franklin students. The other thing we discussed is the auditorium. There's been a lot of work by the Subcommittee for the Performing Arts, and the 1,200-seat is where the Subcommittee really feels would best meet this region.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you repeat that? Did I catch that number?
Yeah, 1,200 seats.
1,200, okay, thank you.
Right. So, the state pays for a third of your enrollment, and the enrollment number right now is at 1160. Correct, not if I'm missing something.
1170.
1170, thanks. 1170. So, a third of that, the state pays, beyond that, we have to pay locally. So, yes, 1,200 is the top of the line, is, there are not many 1,200-seat auditoriums, so it would meet a need in this region to bring in the kind of performances that would allow the community to enjoy. It also would seat the entire student body plus staff. So, it has a lot of pros, and so we wanted to show how much is it, the difference between an 800-seat auditorium, 1,000-seat auditorium, a 1,200-seat auditorium, just so we could get a perspective of that? And so, you can see, it goes up about 300,000 when you, you add those seats.
And this is above and beyond what the state would pay?
Correct. Right. So, if you look at 800-seat, it's about 4.2 million to 5.2 million, and that's just the seats. And then you go to 1,000 seats and 1,200 seats. So, it's just to put, put in perspective of the cost of those. The next...
Katie?
Yes.
I'm getting questions asked of me on the phone here.
Sure.
All people are seeing is you and the manager. They're not seeing anything that's coming on the screen.
Okay, Brian, okay, let me tell Brian. Brian, the public isn't seeing the screen.
Yeah, they, they would like to see the school, you know, and what you were showing.
So, we'll go back to the, maybe we can go back to the design?
I think we could probably put this up on our website too for Postfact.
And this is gonna be...
Absolutely.
Brian has the, the...
This is gonna be presented on Wednesday night again?
No, no. But the public forum will be, and we'll do Facebook Live, but we can go back.
Counselor Gary?
Counselor Gary.
Well, let's just continue with what we're doing. Ms. Gronn, as long as Brian's got it up on the screen now. But Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really like this presentation. It's really, really great. The only thing that I'm missing is any details of talk about ADA compliance, and in order to have a school that's built for all, to meet the need of all students, no matter their physical limitations, or age, or whatnot, that is a big part in my mind, and I know that's gonna add to the cost, but...
It would not add to the cost, 'cause ADA is required.
You have to do it.
That, the state makes sure we're ADA-compliant. Yes, it's mandatory.
So, you'll be having elevators and ramps, and the bathrooms, good.
Absolutely. Right. When you build new, you have, you're in code compliance. Yes.
Continue, please.
All right, so, so what we talked about a lot at the Subcommittee meeting, not as much at the building committee level at this point, because this was a two-and-a-half-hour meeting just to get to these slides, so the, the next step is to go back and review the local dollars. So, what we talked about, and it's large, you're not seeing it all, that's one, is what would be the first choice? The first choice locally, and if Brian slides down, you can see the cost there. So, we're talking about an auditorium, a stadium, climate control, geothermal, distributed dining, a stage, a little larger stage, a second turf field, concessions, pool, tech shop, interior wooding. So, they do the basic finishing. This would be additional dollars to add some, like here, there's some wood. The lighting and sound for the stage, electronics, the community stairs, orchestra pit, solar displays. So, 'cause when you talk about if you're going to do a stadium, you wanna make sure you have everything that supports the stadium. If you have an auditorium that's 1,200 seats and you're bringing your stuff in, you wanna make sure you have the equipment to support that. So, a lot of these go hand-in-hand. If you're gonna do X, you gotta do Y. If you don't, then don't do the, don't do the 1,200 seats and don't do the stadium. I mean, you have to be thinking, forward-thinking. We wanna draw in the revenue we're hoping to draw in over the years. We've got to make it so that it's advantageous for people to take advantage of. That is the first cut. The second one option we discussed is removing the pool, the orchestra pit, the solar displays. We've done research on pools, and yes, would the community benefit from a pool? Absolutely. No one would argue that. But a cost to maintain a pool, the upkeep of a pool is, is, is high cost, and they don't make a lot of revenue back in order to pay for itself. They would make some, but not for its full thing. So, that's why it came off the second tier. That brought down the local cost to this. And then we went to a third option, which removed the tech shop, I think was the only additional, and the second turf field. So, we kinda looked at, okay, well, those are things that could be taken away that we could make up in another area. So, we're at 16 to 20 million. If you keep going, there's other costs besides what the subcommittees have been talking about, which is with the performing arts, there is a need for set construction, costume storage, dressing rooms, drama state, storage. Now, some of that, as we've worked with Harriman in the design, is how can we design behind that performing arts area, some of that CTE space to help support them, that we might not need as much of this as we look at the design. The 21st century spaces, some, we have talked about perhaps having other spaces in there that can be more flexible, 'cause once you design it and you put it a certain way, you may lose flexibility. That may be something we've talked about removing. Adult education, surprising enough, we all know the importance of adult education. The state does not fund adult education space in the high school. So, if it's going to be in there, there will be additional costs. Right now, it is in our space allocation. So, but it is a local cost. The state does not pay for adult ed space. The other thing is the PE fitness aerobics room. We are talking with the state around our fitness. We had a really good discussion on Friday narrowing down what the state will fund, and I think they will help us in this area. So, that was really good news. So, some of this, as we work with the DOE and we work with our subcommittees, we can start, continue to fine-tune what's the state going to pay, and may be able to remove some of these local costs. The other things is off, right now, not included is, in our space allocation, is tickets, concessions, although there's an area you could make into it. A gallery, which some places have had a special place for art display, but it's not necessary. You can display in other ways. The black box, we had talked about, we had talked about a green room, and we had talked about a lecture hall. Those things are not included at this time in the space allocation. So, there were things included. Thank you.
I'd like to open it up to some questions for you. Thank you, first of all, with one statement, thank you very much for the work that you, staff, members of the public, Counselor Young, Counselor Lasagna have put forth on all this. I mean, I've participated a little bit. It's a heavy load.
Yeah.
All right, one question.
Sure.
After you've, you've kind of whittled down and had some thought process, will this physical plant footprint be the best high school in New England? Not one of, not in Maine, but in New England?
I think you're putting me on the spot, Mayor Levesque.
Yes, very much so.
I, I see that.
Yeah.
I, I think it's going to depend on what the local commitment is, to be honest.
As, as written, as up on the screen, isn't the best.
If we went with option A, we would be pretty close to competitive with the top schools in New England. I've seen a lot of schools, Massachusetts schools, you know, whether we can compete on that level, but we are, it will definitely be the, what's the word I'm looking for, flagship of Maine.
Yeah. Now, for the record, I'm gonna state that the physical plant does not necessarily make the educational output of the school, of course, but you do have to have that complement, what you're doing inside the walls. So, thank you very much for that. Open up to some questions from the council and the committee, school committee? We have anything, Counselor Gary? Well, hold on one second, just, you just went before. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak before Counselor Gary? Counselor Forner? I'll come right back to you, Counselor Gary.
Just, when you mentioned cosmetology in the plan, you have 13 satellite programs. Cosmetology is one of those satellite programs. Why is it in the building? Because the satellite, to me, means it's going to be someplace else, right?
The satellite, everything satellite is, means it's not at Lewiston Regional Tech Center. So, we are the satellite. So, all those programs are in our building.
For the 13 programs?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you were talking about there's no space for a lecture hall...
Right.
Why can't it be done in the part that does the plays and the drama, when they're not, I mean, couldn't it be multi-tasked?
Absolutely. This, when we visited other high schools, they have both. They have the auditorium, then they have a small lecture hall, which might seat 200. So, it's more intimate. So, sometimes when they build an auditorium like the size we're looking at, they may draw an area where they could pull a curtain down or make it more intimate, absolutely. The other thing is the Google stairs was not a high expense. So, you could put that in and make it a lecture hall as well. So, they're, we're definitely looking at how to use the, the space as flexible as you can and as efficient you can, efficiently as you can. So, the very things you're talking about, we've mentioned.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Tatus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a, gonna go, that top tier, what was that, 35 million?
Yeah. Brian, can you go back to that first option?
So, you're...
Local, it's the local, the first local slide.
You're recommending option three, correct?
Well, no, we haven't...
Sorry?
What we said is, we wanna bring to you things that, here's number one, and then try to, and then we...
That's one.
You're gone too far.
Too far.
Woo, all right, yeah.
Three slides.
There's one, keep going. Two. I think it's the next one. Yeah. So, we, I would say, the building committee, the pool is something...
I can't read it that well, that says...
Yeah.
Yeah. The pool is, is...
Five to what?
Is definitely an item.
25 to 32 million?
Yeah.
Is the pool still there?
Yes. I would say option two at the most, because it removes the pool. Jason, I think is what you were asking?
Correct.
So, if we go, keep going down, Brian, to the next one. So, the local B, I think, is the one where the pool is removed. Orchestra pit is not necessary. It's obviously something that would enhance, but we're learning from others. There's ways now you can design, and because of acoustics being so upscale now, you can do things without having a definitive orchestra pit. So, we would work with others that have built without one to make sure we're doing it accurately.
That's what I want, I just wanted, 'cause we didn't mention how much that top tier was. And I, I know I'm considered sometimes to be a killjoy, but I, I hope we're at the point now where we can talk about pricing and what it's gonna cost us, not just to build, but also to maintain and replace. Now, in the past, we haven't had a good record of rebuilding and replacing what we owned. So, if we build a nice place, but then 20 years from now, we're looking at 10, 15 million to replace part of it because it ages, we need to know that upfront. What it's gonna cost also to maintain this brand-new school, 100 million dollars, whatever it is, do you realize what the maintenance is gonna be on, it's a brand-new school?
Well, you would be, you would be...
But you can't imagine how it's gonna increase our maintenance budget, just because, just for what the state pays for.
Here's your positive. Here's your positive. Harriman one has to do that. So, that will be done before we get to the referendum questions at the school committee level and the city council level. council level. That has to be done. It's part of their process. The positive is, this building is going to be highly efficient, unlike the current building. So, they often look at, you think there's going to be this major increase, but because you've done so much with your efficiencies and your design, the geothermal, things that you do, often it sometimes comes as a wash. Now, will there be increase perhaps in custodial? We'll have to look at that.
Absolutely. But also, but you take it per square footage, so they have a tendency to say, per square footage, you're going to cut your costs in half, but then you've doubled and tripled your square footage. So, the maintenance costs for the city.
Absolutely.
And we need to, I really like to know what that's going to be, whatever we come against.
You will know. You will know.
Because of so many things we've got to think about. And I'm a little bit nervous too, because we're moving very fast, and we have a straw poll in, when's the straw poll?
You have, you have a design concept straw poll in February.
Which I don't think a lot of people will attend, I don't think. Not if, you know, last meeting was any indication. But then we have a straw poll before the actual election, or then we go right to election?
You, you go to straw, you go to straw poll, to school committee, to city council, to the referendum.
Yeah.
Yeah. But remember, the straw poll is about the design. So, Brian, if you bring up that first design, because the public might not have seen it.
That's just the design, but not necessarily.
You don't, you're not doing a straw poll on pricing.
No. And so, we're going to be so far down the road.
There will be a public hearing on that.
We'll be so far down the road, which I was afraid of, there will be 90% there, and then the public's going to decide if minimum a $16 million local bond is going to fly, or a $30 million local bond, what do we do if it, if we, it doesn't pass? We start over and?
Well, our job is to have it pass. So, you're here tonight as a joint. We have to continue to have a conversation about what we believe the public can afford, and if we have to go back and look, or we have to make adjustments. We are looking at hiring a PR campaign person in order to help support our work to get, you know, there's, there's a group working together to try to do that. We'll be kicking off fundraising hopefully next month. So, there are a lot of things.
A lot of things that have to happen. I just want to make the point, when I look at a minimum now, it looks like $16 million is going to be recommended. That's at the bottom end. I mean, I'm a little nervous about going forward.
And if I could interject, and this is something for us all to keep in mind, $16 million is a lot of money for anyone. But, we have to transition that or translate that into what that, does that do for our mil rate?
Right.
For now, going out 20 years or 30 years, however the bonding powers that be decide to pull that out. I think that's the number we need to focus in on, and the effect to the average taxpayer of Auburn, because $16 million, nobody, everybody will have kind of a negative reaction to that. But we need to look at, I think, in a different light.
Well, but I'm saying, like, Mr. Mayor, you were saying that you want the best high school in New England that's up in the top tier between 25 and 32 million.
Well, that doesn't, price doesn't necessarily denote the best, right?
Okay.
There are some great cars out there that are a lot cheaper than the most expensive cars. But the best car for Auburn is really what we need to get to.
Right.
So, that's why I asked the question. It doesn't necessarily mean the A. I would agree with everybody. I think a pool is better suited in a different type of organization because, and I know pools well, it was my first career, they are very cost prohibitive on the ongoing maintenance side in operation. So, and not without getting into the weeds, and I do want to be conscious of time, I want to be conscious of the timeframe. Is there any type of indication on mil rate impact, right now that we have, call it max-case scenario, or however we want to do, and I don't want to put anyone on the spot.
We have, we have numbers, if you'd like. Would you like us to do that?
Give us...
It's your time. I want to...
No, no, we'd like, I think, everybody would like to have them. Counselor Lasagna, you got to have a...
Go redhead. This is important.
Okay. So, if you could just give us a ballpark estimate, call it class, I'm sorry, option local B, go to the middle-case scenario, or whatever you have for...
We have, Jill and Adam have been working on that.
So, we have some numbers based on if we borrowed 10 million, 15 million, 20 million dollars with the current valuation, what would that look like? And just to give a sense, it's about four and a half cents per million dollars. So, 15 million turns into 68 cents on the mil rate. And to put that in perspective, that would be, if you looked at a $100,000 value property, that would be 68 additional dollars per year in year one, and then, of course, it tiers down a little bit each year as you pay off the principal interest.
That's on 10 million?
Or 20?
On 10.
That's on 10.
That number was on 15.
15 million is $68.
That's level B, right?
For 100,000.
For 100,000, roughly.
Second level.
And then 20 million would be 90 cents, or $90 on the $100,000.
Yeah.
Just to, so that gives some context of what that looks like.
Ballpark, we're not talking about retirement of any future debt on year seven or five or what we, or we're all looking at, or CIP roll out.
Very, very ballpark, but it at least gives us some context to the, these numbers that we're talking about.
Effectively state, you could probably, could you, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, this is quote-unquote worst-case, as far as addition, barring anything glattismic happening to Auburn's tax base. If our current steady run rate, what we're doing, inflation being inflation?
We're using 4% interest. That, so, depending on what the economy does, what the interest rates do, it could change. But we're, we're using 4%. So, this year, of course, and we're using 20-year bonds, this year, we got 2.5, 2.6 on 10 years. So, the 4 is not, not outs, you know.
And that's correct.
We got those numbers from Joe Cutera, who's our financial advisor.
Dirt. Okay, gotcha.
And that doesn't include that, we haven't figured the maintenance, the ongoing continual increase in maintenance costs for the school either.
No, that doesn't include those numbers. That just, that's the price of bonding the project.
And I think, for the purposes of this meeting, really, and that's an important number, I mean, obviously, the look and look at the high school, the amenities of the high school, and correct me if anybody wants to add anything, that's a parting comment here. But now that we can put some sort of ballpark price tag on what we're seeing, either way, I think it adds some concreteness to the conversation within the community. It's not final. There's no final numbers. It's not taking into consideration any fundraising initiatives, any compromise of the state or fine-tuning on Harriman's end. Okay?
And also that, when you talk about that per 100,000, that's all valuation, not just a small home that's a $150,000 home. That's a million-dollar building, that's figuring our entire value when you're doing that. So, a local business, if the building's worth a million dollars, what's their rate going to go on?
And that is on top of school tax, what the money's, the regular school budget would raise and city budget would raise. So, you add those two to that. So, this is just one piece of it.
It doesn't, it doesn't include retiring bonds that are going to be happening in the future.
And I, I don't want to avoid the whole financial debate, because we all understand that that's going to come in front of this council. I do believe it's pre, and committee. I do believe it's probably premature to go into that, you know, the details of which, because they're just, details are cloudy. We just don't know.
My only concern was, Mr. Mayor, that we're going into something that may not sell, I hate to use the word sell, and to go all the way to the end and find out, well, we kind of overthought what we wanted to do, and it fails.
That's the process we have to follow.
But not thinking about it now, or we weren't a few months ago, we would just go ahead and go with option A or B and say, that's it, we'll just do it.
I do, I do think people are thinking, but that's why we're talking about it, and that's why finances produce some numbers. So, where I think, you know, I'll, I'll state that, you know, from a, from a procedural standpoint, and build-outs and developments, this is actually a fairly solid process, and I think we're talking about it now six months before a vote. But I do think we owe it, as our fiduciary responsibility, to tweak the numbers a bit, of course, which I know is happening. The state has some fairly decent guidelines. And is there a risk of losing the election? Yeah, there is. Hopefully, the marketing, if the messaging, if you would, on the positives that this will happen for the community, will come out over the course of the next five months. Or not, one of the two. If you're not going to do it, great, don't do it, right? Is there any other comments or questions? Counselor Lasagna.
Great job. I mean, we were involved in these long, involved conversations, and you really distilled it very well, and I appreciate you getting some numbers, even if they're estimates. One question I had is, how detailed will the plans look when people come to vote on it? I know it won't be final plans, just so that people will have enough of an idea about what they're going to vote on in terms of the...
I think you're going to get the detail that we saw here, which is down to what's going to be the first floor, the second floor, third floor, probably not, here's the math room, the, you know, but here's where the classrooms are, here's where the CTE programs are, that level. I think they're also going to try to show pictures.
Yeah, great.
Of what they're talking about in those areas. So, they're going to work hard for that public, you know, that forum, to make sure we're giving a good picture of what we're, we're talking about.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to thank you all for presenting tonight. I know it's a lot of information in a very short amount of time, and this is just one early step in a very long, long process. I'd like to thank the school committee for joining the city council tonight in this joint workshop.
Thank you.
We're going to now stand at recess for five minutes, and we'll be back shortly to finish off the city portion of the workshop. All right.
That looks out of that freaking building. That didn't believe in, you know.
Honestly.
I mean, I gotta figure, there's gotta be some positives in operational that.
Sure. Positive, but like.
Folks, we're gonna start the meeting, I'm gonna open the meeting about five minutes early, then we're just gonna go right into workshop, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. We were just on. Okay. Okay, we're gonna start with a workshop right now. Call the workshop back to order. Just for everybody watching, we're running late in our workshop, so we're gonna start off with the next workshop item with Mrs. Dorisco, talking about city and tax-acquired properties. We're then, after this, gonna open up the city council meeting and then revert back to the next two quick economic development workshops before we go into our regularly scheduled meeting. So, Mr. Dorisco, you're up.
Thank you for having me. I'm happy to report the Tax Acquired Committee has been hard at work, and we will start by giving an update of what they have accomplished in the last year, and then move on to five properties that they are requesting or recommending for disposition. We started working on about fifty tax-acquired properties in August of 2017. Since that time, the committee has sold thirteen tax-acquired properties. Six of those were redeemed by the previous owner, and the others were either listed with a real estate agent or sold by sealed bid. Eviction proceedings have been initiated on twelve of the fifty properties. Eight were reviewed recently by the Tax Acquired Committee. Five of them will be before you this evening, and three will be scheduled for a future meeting. The tax collector is currently working with two other properties to redeem or transfer the ownership back to the previous owner, as well as working with six other taxpayers who signed contracts with a deadline of March fifteenth, 2019. Four of the fifty properties have been flagged not to sell for various reasons. Two are flagged in conjunction with the new Auburn development plan, one due to bankruptcy proceedings, and one for welfare reasons. Three properties will be reviewed Thursday by the Tax Acquired Committee that needed more research, and we hope to look at all avenues of that and come before council with recommendations on those. Two properties were previously approved by council for disposition and have been delayed due to difficulties with obtaining title insurance and a few other issues. So that's an update of where we started and where we are right now. Any questions on that?
I'll make a comment, and I'd love Counselor Walker and Counselor Young to talk about this as well, but I don't rec-- in my recollection, I don't or can't point to a time where we've been disposing of properties as quickly and as efficiently as this. So, thank you very much for the work, and Counselor Walker, Counselor Young, in your history, what's your opinion?
Well, I can remember back twenty-five years ago when we got rid of a lot of properties in a small amount of time. We, it took a long time to put it all together, just like this one did, but I'll give them credit, though. These have probably gone a little easier with less, less work from our side than it, than it did twenty-five years ago. So, I guess, you know, if we can sell them and get rid of them so that they're not sitting there, it's a great thing to do.
Might be the closest thing to a compliment from Counselor Walker this term. Any other comments from the council? Counselor Titus?
Thank you, I appreciate the committee as well, and I, and it's always been one of my things I'd like to see moving forward since I've been a counselor, and I'm very glad. I know that each time we do it, we're gonna get a little bit more streamlined, a little better, and I just think going down the process itself is valuable, and now we're seeing the results at the end, and I'm, thank you for that very much.
It's our pleasure.
Any other questions or comments from the council? None being? Mrs. Dorisco, thank you very much, job well done.
Thank you.
Oh, do you have more?
I do.
Oh, well, keep going then, by all means, I'm sorry.
We have five properties that we would like to bring to council for approval for disposition at your next meeting. The first is Twenty-Five Lake Street. The total that we hope to recover is twenty-five thousand, six seventy-four point nine six. Enclosed in your packets are all the property details. The committee recommends selling that property by sealed bid. The next ones are One-Sixty Chicoine and One-Sixty-Four Chicoine. Am I saying that right? All right. So, the balance on One-Sixty is four thousand, eight forty-two thirty-two, and One-Sixty-Four is four thousand, eight thirty-six seventy-three. After more research, we are looking at those, for those to be a buildable lot, they would need to be sold together as a package in the sealed bid process, and the committee does recommend selling those by sealed bid. The next one is Thirty-One Vine Street. The minimum bid on that would be ten thousand, five sixty forty-seven. The committee also recommends selling that by sealed bid. The next one is Twenty-Three Cleveland Avenue. The balance due on that property is twenty-six thousand, three fifty-five point four-five. The committee recommends selling this property by sealed bid. This is the only one I feel the council, you know, may wanna look at a little bit. A recommendation came out that this is next door to a city-owned park on Cleveland Avenue, which has only on-street parking. So, one consideration would be if the city would want to demolish the building that currently exists and create parking. Eric Cousins has drawn this rendering here, so you could see how many parking spaces could be gained if you were to take that avenue. The committee doesn't, at this point, recommend that. The building is in fairly good structural condition, and the only thing that would need to be immediately taken down would be a back porch.
What number Cleveland is that again?
Twenty-three. Those are them at this time. If, if council has any direction or consideration, it would be helpful to have that just prior to coming back.
And we're scheduled for January seventh for this to come to council for action?
Yep.
If, if you don't mind.
Please.
On Cleveland Avenue, whenever there's a sport's going on, whatever, whether it's T-ball, them sixteen spots would do almost no good at all. We have, I don't know, forty cars up there when they have them events going on, so that isn't gonna save us if, if it doesn't, I would put it on the market, if it doesn't sell or we, we don't get what we want for it, then maybe we look at taking it down and whatever, because I, I would guess that's gonna cost the city somewhere between fifteen and twenty to take it down, then to have the lot ready, and you can't keep it a dirt lot, so we're gonna have to put asphalt on it, so now we've got ourselves another ten grand or more, so. Then we'll have to maintain plowing it, 'cause they'll wanna open it for special parking or something, so. I, I would rather we sell it off and, and then we see what we do if it doesn't sell.
It is a residential area, so the parking lot would end up being sandwiched between two existing homes, which I think is less than desirable for the existing neighborhood.
I agree with Counselor Walker, because if that's a home in good condition, I wouldn't want to waste that, because somebody can buy that right up and, and work with it, and that's not enough parking places to make a difference.
And to Counselor Walker's point, I believe the ongoing rate right now is around ten thousand dollars per spot for surface, so they're looking at over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just in enhancements to create sixteen spots. So, I think to your point, I mean, unless there's any other comment about this, I think our recommendation right now is to move forward on your plans, any recommendations to dispose of these lots?
Very good.
Okay, and we'll see you back on January seventh.
Sounds good, thank you.
Can I just say that the information that Counselor Walker and the mayor gave us in terms of what it costs to have a parking space is extremely helpful in situations like this. I wouldn't know that, and so that really is helpful in terms of making the, the decisions. Thank you.
Mrs. Dorisco, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call the order of the meet, excuse me, call the order of this meeting on December seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just for all.
We're gonna keep going on at a workshop before our regularly scheduled council agenda items. Next on the list is proposed discontinuance of Niskiuna Street. Mr. Cousins, Deputy Director of Economic Community Development, will present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for squeezing us in. I know you have a tight timeline tonight on the agenda. To my right is Michael Gatto, and to his right is Doug Weiss, owner of Evergreen Subaru. We've been before you a few times over the last number of years, mostly since the two thousand and ten comprehensive plan had labeled this area as an area that would transition from residential zoning to commercial zoning over time. Doug has, under the Quiz Kids LLC name that you can see on the screen, has purchased a number of the lots along Niskiuna Street. Back out a bit here. Evergreen Subaru sits here on the corner of Jolene Drive and Center. Doug has purchased the land here, to the north of Niskiuna Street, these two lots to the west of those, those initial two, and expanded into this area. Over time, we've talked about, as the zone changes out there, to make the land more usable for commercial purposes, to discontinue Niskiuna Street. What that does is it allows for the land that Quiz Kids LLC owns out there to be combined into a single lot. It also allows for the city to drop the maintenance responsibilities on that short street, and it allows for an expansion of the commercial uses on that property over time to increase the tax base. The property on the corner of Turner Street in Niskiuna here is owned by James and Suzanne Pittman, Quiz Kids LLC. Doug has that under contract to purchase. Jim and Suzanne are building a new home here in Auburn, and we expect that, that'll be available for purchase either late this year or early next.
Scheduled for January fourteenth.
So, scheduled for, for mid-January. This lot on the corner of Jolene and Turner is owned by Mrs. Suzanne Roy. She's completely aware of the plans. Doug has worked closely with her over the years, installing and landscaping recently and, and over time, to make sure that the transition between her residential home, which is on a commercially-zoned lot and the commercial uses, is smooth. Both Suzanne Roy, James, and James and Suzanne Pittman have signed waivers that they understand that the street is being proposed for discontinuance, and they agree that the, the existing frontages that they have, that will remain, eliminate any monetary damages that would be required as part of that process. So, we've worked closely with them. Doug and Mike were willing to be here tonight. We were trying to read brief on this presentation, but they're certainly here to answer any questions.
Hope this up to the council, just as a reminder, we've talked about this much earlier in this year. Counselor Zonya, your hand up?
Oh, yes, the one question ahead, is this gonna make any difference in terms of through traffic on Malibu Drive?
So, Malibu is just to the north. I know that currently, when the light backs up at Center Street headed southbound, sometimes people will take a right onto Niskiuna. We don't anticipate an increase on Malibu Drive, but I, I couldn't say for sure. I think it would have to back up quite a ways for somebody to see the traffic stopped and choose that as an alternative.
Okay, 'cause there are people who do talk about the increased traffic on those through streets and it being a problem.
One quick question. That's the current businesses that are there, and I think you have a home there as well, are they remaining, is not going to do anything to the existing businesses, agencies there?
Which homes are you talking about in terms of, direct my?
I don't mean personal homes, I mean, you know, group homes, for example, and there's one group home there.
John Murphy Homes down the street?
Yeah.
John Murphy Homes across the street?
Yes, right.
Yeah, I believe that's, I don't know, that's more commercial offices, isn't that?
Yeah, it's, it's an office.
I don't think they're.
Office versus a group home.
That's not a residential, yeah, that's, they conduct business day-to-day out of that.
Okay, so no one will be ejected from the premises?
No, and, you know, part of the process, six months ago or so, when we, we came through talking about the, the zoning change, because we, I did canvass the neighborhood and knocked on doors.
Right, you did.
All the way, you know, two blocks over, and talked to them about the, the zoning change that was coming, but also the fact that we were looking to discontinue the street. So, I've had contact, and I think that you can look at the minutes from those meetings of my conversation, you know, from the different residents and, and what we talked about.
Yeah, I remember that you had done your homework last time, and I was really pleased with that, so just wanted to make sure no one is out.
And, and we did talk with Johnson, or Murphy Homes, but again, it was, as a commercial entity, he didn't have any, you know.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? This has got a pla-- oh, Counselor Hayes.
Maybe just one, I guess, I think since we last talked to you, I think you also purchased property, and so is Subaru Evergreen moving totally, or are you continuing to have part of your operation work out of the facility you have now?
Can I say yes to both? It's a little from column A and a little from column B. We're definitely, we purchased the dormant Best Buy building, and we're planning on moving the Subaru operations over there, but we're gonna separate some of our operations and leave them back at this facility and keep it continuing as auto retail.
Did you say it's retail?
Auto retail, just, you know, a dealership.
At this location?
At this location, it just won't be the Subaru business.
Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any public utilities and stuff under the ground in the road that another agency or whatever needs to get to at any point in time?
We met a couple of years ago when we were looking at discontinuing the road, and there are no sewer water through the, through the property. There are some power lines, but there, it's a dead-end line, so it only services us. As far as I know, there's no gas, so as far as I know, there's no impact to utility companies at all.
And fire hydrants?
Fire hydrants, I don't believe there's any on the street, so I think they're off to the Center Street or Turner Street side.
And we have reviewed this with the Development Review Group, so public services, police, fire have all been involved in that discussion, and there haven't been any objections to the discontinuance of the street.
Good, and well, thank you. First of all, I do want to, as a side note, as Counselor Hayes brought up, thank you very much for reinvesting into the city of Auburn. You know, we were all a little concerned about what the former Best Buy was gonna look like. We do hear through the grapevine that you've got some amazing plans, though no details were shared, so, yeah, this bar is pretty high, and you said it there, so thank you very much. We'll look forward to seeing this in front of our agenda on January seventh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last, I'd like to, is a proposed acceptance of Mountain View Drive as a city street with Mr. Chris Bennett, who's a project engineer presenting on this one.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, yeah, this is the, looking to accept the rural residential street of Mountain View Drive off of Danville Corner Road.
Dan's up there.
It's in your packets, the location, pretty standard design in a rural residential roadway, twenty-four feet wide, pavement with two-foot shoulders. I guess I'll, I'll open it up to questions with the process.
Take a map.
Yeah.
And I forgot to acknowledge Mr. Dan Goyette, here as well, from Public Service. Is there any questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor? Just a little question, I look at this, it's like a cul-de-sac, and I know that we, we sometimes will not accept the road because it's not wide enough for snowplows to go through or whatever, way to put snow. So, does, is that definitely, with the snow, would we just drive around and go along the houses, or, is that big enough? I guess that's the first thing.
With the snow, this, with this one, I could probably have the wings push it to the inside, and there is room on the outside as well. It'd be the same as, if you're plying a regular street, 'cause you're just going.
So, what is the width of the road there in that cul-de-sac?
Twenty-four feet.
It's twenty-four feet wide?
Yeah.
And, and that's the requirement? Is that the, the city requirement before it can be accepted?
Yes.
And maybe, I don't know if you know, but I live in Grant Mill Estates, and there's several cul-de-sacs and circles and stuff, but I've been told that none of those are accepted because they're not wide enough for the snowplows or something, and do you know anything about that?
I'd have to look at the specifics of the design of that. This was reviewed by Public Works and by engineering at the time of design to make sure that it could accommodate our plow trucks when and if it became a public street.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, and again, this will appear for a vote on our January seventh meeting, so, agenda. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next, we have two consent items on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Fornier, a second from Counselor Walker. Show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained? Consent items passed by a vote of seven-zero. Next are the minutes of the December third, two thousand and eighteen, regular council meeting. Are there any corrections?
Thank you.
No corrections? If not, I'll entertain to approve the minutes, a motion to approve the minutes of the December third, two thousand and eighteen, regular city council meeting.
Second.
I have a move by Counselor Zonya and a second by Counselor Fornier. Show of hands, all those in favor? Okay, pass a seven-zero. Now on to communications, presentations, and recognition. We have several items here that we're gonna go through, and with the council's okay, what I'd like to do is change the order and knock out kind of the quickest ones first for efficiency's sake, okay? So, first, we have a presentation. This is interesting. We're gonna present to a company here, been in Auburn since nineteen ninety-nine, actually, located on One Twenty-One Mill Street. The name of the company is Great Falls Marketing. And just a little bit about Great Falls. This location is our corporate offices today. The company started off as Power Tel before then, has gone through several evolutions. So, for the past seventeen years now, they've been a proud Auburn-based business employing hundreds of people in the city and surrounding region. I've had a privilege of knowing these folks for several, actually, gosh, over, well over a decade, close to fifteen years now, and I'd like to invite the principals, as well as some key senior staff, to come up here. I'd like to give them an award, and much due, much overdue recognition. So, Scott McShane, Mike Fraughton, if you could, please come forward. Now, this might be a first for Auburn history, too, I'm just gonna move around here with the mic. So, these gentlemen, if you could just turn and face the crowd and the cameras, several things about them, very, very understated. Many people have no idea of the sheer magnitude of their operations and their international reach. I've had the distinct privilege to go head-to-head in competition with these gentlemen off and on for a good fifteen years. Sometimes I won, some, most of the time I won, we'll just leave it at that. I got a, I got a great memory, right? But I've been in their operations numerous times, hundreds of people got their start working, learning good soft skills, learning communication skills, using it as a, kind of a catapult for future success, and those individuals that have worked for you over the years bump into me all the time. You know, they're still here in Auburn, they're doing great with life, they're raising families, are contributing to our city, and they're proud of our city. And I, for one, am proud that you all are here, okay? I'm very happy, even though you've expanded outside of Auburn, you've always kept your Auburn roots. So, that I'd like to, maybe you first, give two keys to the city. One to you, Mr. McShane.
Thanks a lot.
Well, thank you. And then a second one to Mr. Fraughton.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Okay? And just a round of applause for Great Falls Marketing, a great business. A great business. And they've just been a big supporter of a lot of philanthropic causes in Auburn. So I just want to call that out, all the, all the charities, all the involvement. So thank you again for that. Do you all want to say something?
Sure.
Like Mayor Levesque said, we've been, been in Auburn for 17 years, and without this city, we wouldn't be as successful as we are. We've expanded to Saco, Westbrook, Augusta, but again, we'll always have a base here in Auburn, and we appreciate, it's a great place to do business, and we certainly know Mayor Levesque well, and we know that bright things are ahead. He's, he's been a big supporter of ours, and we've friendly competition, but great friends. And so we, we appreciate the city, and we're going to continue to be here and hire people, and hopefully continue to expand. So, thank you.
And I'd be, and thank you, Mike, for that. And also, well, it would be a shame if I didn't mention the fact that they've contributed over $10,000 to our Seska Centennial efforts as well. So they're one of our founding partners. So thank you very much for that. You're actually putting our TV commercials up on the air all over Central and Southern Maine, so thank you. If we could just get some pictures? I know, Jack's in there. Jack wants his picture taken. And Gardel Atetsky, some of you might know the family, it's been around for about four generations in New Auburn. Guards here as well. Mr. Mardor left. Oh, he's there. Steve's here. Come on up. Counsel, if you want to stand up and clear around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you did.
Oh, okay.
There it is. Look, you're on TV.
You're on TV now. Ready? Just pit it. You're it. Good job, buddy. You're going to be mayor one day. You're welcome. Now go to bed, you've got school tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Great Falls. We appreciate it. Moving on to communication, we're going to go to the Auburn Public Library. We have an update from Mrs. Gautier and Mamie Nae.
Mr. Mayor, councilors. Sorry about that, turned it away. Good evening. I'm here with Pat Gucci, who is our Vice President of the Board of Trustees, and she's going to give us, give you an update of what's going on at the library.
By default. Right? I said by default. I personally, this isn't in the script, but I personally think the library is a jewel of our city. And a lot of that credit goes to Mamie, sitting next to me, who is well-respected around the state and around the nation, and takes, gives a feeling of great pride to the City of Auburn to have her here with us. So, the mission of the library is to bring people, resources, and ideas together to engage, enlighten, and enrich the community. We're able to offer a full-service library because of community support. We receive 80% of our funding from the city, just under $1 million, and we raise the other 20% through our fundraising efforts. We do an annual appeal, annual online auction, book sales, and more. We share a library card with Lewiston, and we contract with Minnet to provide their residents' library cards. Through our statewide consortium, we have access to approximately 90 library collections to supplement our own. We also try to go out into the community to share the library's resources. We have pop-up libraries that bring books to places for people to check out, and they go monthly to Schooner Estates and to this town of Minnet. We have a beautiful building with a great collection. We have a great staff, an engaged Board of Trustees, and a very supportive community. And Mamie says that's how she always describes the library when people ask about it. Some of the highlights from our current goals and objectives, we have robust children's services, storytimes, read-to-a-dog, STEM activities, drop-in crafts, summer reading program, which includes the rec department. We have teen services. Donna does a college night, financial aid guidance, teen space, teen book groups, which are funded through a grant from the American Library Association, and they have a teen life skills program. Adult services include book groups, movies, current event discussions, media literacy in collaboration with the Sun Journal, funded through a grant from the American Library Association, senior college collaboration, Marty Ganyan teaches classes on media literacy. We have the Camden Conference Collaboration, computer classes for developmentally delayed customers. We do have significant numbers of community partnerships. Some of them include children's services. We do early promise education center and annual family math night. Brings about 180 people to the library. We work with the rec department, the school department, the cornerstone of science, and the Cooperative Extension Service. In our teen services, we partner with the PAL Center, Safe Voices, I don't know how to say this, SAPR, Sexual Assault Prevention and Response Services, the ELHS Teen Advisory Board, the Maine Job Corps, and the Community Learning Service Center. We also, for adults, have partnered with LA College, Camden Conference, local clergy, adult ed, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, the Stanton Bird Club, and the Maine Audubon Society. Some of the current projects, collaborations, and upcoming programs include Winter Fest, where we'll do a storytime and movie on January 29. Participating in the 150th birthday of the City of Auburn will be a cake site. There'll be programming for all ages, and there is a staff member on the steering committee, and there is staff liaison to the committee. We're also involved in the Auburn Strategic Plan. There are two staff members on the Growth and Quality Subcommittee. We do an indoor farmer's market on February 22. We do vacation programs for kids and teens. We do Fitness Fridays for teens, which is part of the life skills for teens. A newly-created Teen Advisory Board with Heidi McCurdy at the high school and other students who work with Donna in the library. There are book clubs for adults, including a new one focusing on topics people are talking about. And there are media lab classes, instruction on how to use the lab to make videos, audios, convert one type of media to another. Those kinds of things are available. Couple of things, items of interest. We have five new trustees. We may try to make, make an effort actually to encourage a new generation of people to participate. We have Lisa Chezere from Minnet, Dan Hargraves, Lisa Trafton, Liza Dmitri, and Laurie Fermianto from Auburn. So excited to get new people on the board. Barbara Trafton has retired as a trustee, and she and Dick were honored for their dedication to the library at the November meeting. And it's interesting, Lisa Trafton is her daughter-in-law, is that correct?
Her niece.
Her niece, so she will be continuing that longstanding Trafton tradition with the library. In September, they built a new garden created to attract birds. It was the year of the bird, is that correct? So that's an attraction on the outer side of the library, facing Court Street. We have approximately 600 visitors each day in the library. We lend out about 206,000 items each year and have a collection of 84,000 items. Nearly 13,000 people attended our programs, and our volunteers gave more than 3,300 hours of their time. We do have a few challenges. The first one is parking. With the coming of the Troy, Troy Street apartment complex, the parking has become both a short-term and a long-term issue. We've been trying to work with the city to get a good answer to that. We're trying to keep up with community needs and changes in how libraries operate in a very changing and fast-paced, fast-moving environment. And funding. We need to find a good balance between municipal support and fundraising. Any questions?
Of course. Well, first of all, thank you for that presentation. It was succinct, and it was very inform, impactful. Open up to the council. Was there any comments or questions? Any elaboration? Counselor Lasagna?
I have to say, you are such an outward-facing organization, which is really wonderful to see. And when I read in the paper, all the programs and projects that you're involved in, all the way from people with intellectual disabilities, to elders, to teenagers, you know, I really appreciate what you do so much.
Thank you. Like I said, like Pat said, you know, it's great to have a really good staff and good community support. You know, there's a feeling now that you just can't stay in your library. You do have to become a larger part of the community, and we certainly try and do that. You know, we've got some really good projects underway, and a lot of them do involve collaborations, because we can't be the experts. We can be the facilitators, but not the experts in a lot of areas.
Collaboration, I think that's a word we all need to keep in the back of our minds and remind ourselves about. Thank you for that. Any other comments? Counselor Fornier?
I also appreciate how open and accessible you are to anyone who asks to meet within the building. And that makes all the difference, because there are very few places that groups can meet in, and it's so locally, you know, situated. It's easy to get there. And I don't think anybody on, I'm on the, of course, I'm on the Board of Trustees, Mayor's rep, I rarely see anybody missing the meetings. I mean, you have really good attendance, and you've got great people sitting around, great trustees sitting around the table.
It's, you know, I like to call it a very engaged board.
It is.
And that's very hard to find.
Yes, it is.
Very hard to find.
Good. Well, thank you very much. And if there's no further questions, I appreciate your time. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Walker.
I'd like to say thank you to you as well from the Age Friendly Committee. You make pretty close to every meeting that we have, and we do two a week, and you're there to support us and to help us in need. So, thank you very much.
The library has a lot to offer, and we need to make sure that we get out there and make what our resources are known to the entire community. So we're always looking, you know, for new ideas or ways to help. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Have a very good evening and good luck in your future endeavors.
That was excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel say? That's about sums it up, right?
I want to applaud after they reported. I want to applaud. They did such a good job.
Next, next on the agenda, we have a presentation. 2018 National Incident Management System. Joanne Potvin. Ms. Potvin, always a pleasure to see you.
Yes.
You spread such shiny and heartwarming news about disasters and tragedy.
This gets you Monday. It's really good news.
Oh, there we go. Okay, we'll take it.
Good evening. Joanne Potvin, Director for the Andrews Garden Unified Emergency Management Agency, at least for three more days. After, after 9/11, President Bush signed into, into law Homeland Security Presidential Directive, PD, HSPD-5. In that presidential directive, it required that the states, not to receive some of the federal monies that were being put forth for homeland security, was that the, the states and its localities had to sort of, adopt would be the right word, some resolutions that would allow them to, to receive some of the federal funding to be made available. Part of the requirements in adopting the resolution is that if you wanted some of the federal dollars for homeland security in the way of training, then the municipalities would have, the states and municipalities would have to commit to making sure that its emergency responders receive adequate training in incident command and emergency response, that its municipal officials participate in a training program. And everybody here on the council has participated for the last 10 years in what we call our NIMs 402 Training Program, which is an orientation to incident command. Also, part of the HSPD-5 was we had to have communications interoperability. So a lot of the communications purchased in the cities of Lewiston, Auburn, and throughout the county and the state of Maine, purchased with homeland security monies. We have to ensure that any, anything that is purchased with homeland security for communications allows all emergency responders from any localities to talk to each other. That was a big problem in 9/11, is that police and fire from the same borough, in some instances, couldn't talk to each other during the, the response to the World Trade Centers. So we have to make sure that we have communications interoperability. Along with that, we have to make sure that we, that we credential all of our emergency responders. So in 2006, the City of Auburn, along with all of the other towns in Andrews Garden County and all 16 counties, adopted by resolution the NIMs requirements, the National Incident Management System requirements. So at this point, the Homeland Security is asking all of the states and its municipalities to quickly review the NIMs requirements and to reaffirm their commitment to, to going by the, the NIMs requirements in order to continue to reserve, to, to receive some of the federal dollars that the, the cities have received over the years. Since 2003, the City of, the Cities of Auburn and Lewiston have received well over $6 million in homeland security for communications, for training, for equipment for emergency responders. So I'm here tonight to ask you to consider your reaffirmation of the NIMs requirements and to agree to, to sign the, the adoption of the requirements once again at your next council meeting.
And counsel, thank you very much, Mrs. Potvin. And counsel, just so you know, in your packets is a copy of the resolution. This resolution will come forth to our next meeting. It'll be on the agenda on January 7th, so we do have time to review it. It's pretty standard. I have reviewed it as well. Do we have any questions for Mrs. Potvin? Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you started talking and was saying, you said for three more days, what's happening for three more days?
I'm retiring in three days after 46 years as the, working at the County Emergency Management Agency.
I was going to say something towards the end, but Counsel Gary nailed it. I got to tell you, in the past year, I've enjoyed reading, I'll skip over the city manager's emails on occasion, but not yours.
No.
No? I think we, I can speak for all of us, where we read them with great, great admiration on how well-constructed everything you've done is. So I want to give you just a round of applause for all your years of service to the city, and to the county, to the state, and all of its residents. Truly a ray of sunshine in other, otherwise a very dismal topic. But yes, three days. And who, your replacement's going to be?
I, we already have a replacement. She's already been appointed. She's serving, serving as the deputy director currently, and she'll become director on January 1st. And we've just closed out the application period for deputy director, so we hope that by the beginning of July, beginning of January, we'll have some be appointed to be the deputy director.
So who is the director going forward?
Angela Malino. She comes to Washington State Emergency Management Agency, so that's where her EMA experience comes from. And she, she has a lot of experience in the, the grant part of the program. So she's going to be, she's going to be a big help to the municipalities of the county.
Great. Thank you very much. Is there any other questions or comments?
No, I just have one comment, and I would like to remind Joanne that you really need to get your act on the road, because you have it down pat. You've had it for years and years. You know what you're doing, and I think that you'd be a great consultant to so many people in the state and beyond. Go for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Fornier. I appreciate that.
Or just get a camper and, you know, travel around the country, enjoy some stuff. Good for you. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your services.
Okay, we're moving along. I'm going to open up the first open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business, which is not on the, on this agenda. I would ask that you state your name and address, and please let me your comments to three minutes. Nobody will like to speak to an open session. I will now close the open session and move on to unfinished business, which we have none of. So we're going to move on to new business, which happily we do have some. We have an order to approve the temporary liquor license for the City of Auburn's New Year's Eve extravaganza in celebration. Like how I emphasized that? I'll entertain a motion at this point from the council.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Counselor Fornier, a second from Counselor Lasagna. I'm going to open up to the public for comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak about Auburn's epic New Year's Eve celebration?
Epic.
None. I'll run it back to the council for debate. I'll run it back to the council for debate. Is there any counselor who would like to comment and support?
Mayor.
Counselor Titus?
Just a question. We are applying for a liquor license, so that means that the city of Auburn will actually be in the, the business of purchasing and reselling alcoholic beverages? I thought we'd have a concessionaire doing that.
It's, I'm going to let, if I could, Mr. Kroll, thank you, address this, because I think between yourself and Chief Mowen really orchestrated something that has never really happened in Auburn, so I'd love to hear it from you all.
Sure. I'll ask Chief Mowen to come forward, but there is a process that's allowable by the state to have a municipality apply, and I think Chief Mowen had conversations with state liquor enforcement, and so he'll be able to fill this in.
Given the complexity of the event with various vendors that are going to be selling alcohol there, the easiest thing we found to do in consult, consultation with the state was to apply for a charitable organization license. That allows us to act as the umbrella for these different vendors to come in and to be able to sell alcohol. We still go through the state checks, where the state will be checking the dates of birth of all the people that'll be serving the alcohol, and we're just the umbrella to let everybody be able to come in, and we don't have to get any additional insurance for this or anything like that. It's just the specific type of liquor license for this to happen.
So is that creating liabilities? I mean, I know that if you're, if you have a liquor license and then somebody goes out and gets hurt after drinking in your establishment, you can be held liable.
No, the, the individual vendors will still carry their own liability insurance.
So we can, there'll be some arrangement where we're held harmless?
We, we are ensuring that our insurance for this entire event is going to be covered and, but under the server requirements for the, the vendors that are coming, that'll be still held on to them. We will not be serving the alcohol.
Right, okay. That's good, but I just also worried about the liability, because I know, you know, they go for the deeper pockets whenever there's a lawsuit out there, and if our name is on it, then are we going to be one of those?
Regardless if, if we took out this license or not, we would still be in any claim that was brought forward, because this is an event that the city is hosting.
Thank you.
Counselor Lasagna?
To that end, I have to commend you all for requiring that there be server seller training, so anybody who's serving alcohol will have been trained to be able to do it responsibly, make sure people are drinking responsibly, and I think that's a really great thing that you're doing. And is this sold, is the VIP tent sold out?
The VIP tent is sold out, but general admission, which, let's, for the public that's watching, is very, very, very good. Actually, in my opinion, general admission has better viewing of the concert than VIP. And there's going to be heaters everywhere, so yes. So if you did not get your VIP tickets after I reminded you seventeen times to do, don't worry, I'll wave to you from the other side of the room. Counselor Gary, you had a question?
Well, when we seconded, it was I that seconded, not Holly. She hadn't said anything.
Oh, fair enough.
But if you prefer her to second it, I'll withdraw my motion.
Be honest with you, when I'm looking down, you both sound very similar. I will change it. Counselor Gary, seconded? Thank you. Very good. Is there any other comment, question?
I guess, just a question. The vendors that will be serving, are they vendors that have licenses in other communities but just don't have it here?
No, they-
Or are we going to have entirely-
We have vendors that have liquor license within the city that will be serving, but because there are various vendors within the, within the venue, we couldn't do simple license extensions for each, each establishment, because it's a common area with various vendors. That's why we had to go through the charitable organization piece.
These vendors serve liquor, just-
If I could, let, I'll take a moment. Let me just brief you in. It's a very good question. Gritty's, obviously Auburn Business, House of Bacon, Craft Brew Underground, in addition to Lost Valley Brewing, maybe side by each, and New Auburn Business, not sure if they're going to be fully making beer by this date, though, but it's going to be close. And Baxter. We are keeping this very hyper-local, and that is something that we're all very proud of, is making sure that it's, it's really to showcase part of this Auburn-Lewiston beer. One of the beers will be Auburn 1869, which is a special celebratory beer that's been produced by Gritty Macduffs after feedback at a community night, where they surveyed a lot of patrons and community members on what they liked for beer. And we have it, I've tasted a little bit of it. It should be unveiled in the next week or so after the brewing or fermentation process. And I, I want to applaud Chief Mowen here again on this. In order to get that effect of a street party, we needed to have common area, lots of common area, versus small carved-out areas outside or inside the street. And this is a very creative and, and unique way to accomplish this, which is going to build community throughout our city. So there's a lot of people excited about this. I'm very excited, as you know, so thank you very much for the help on that. Is there any other questions or points of clarity needed? None being?
Oh, right over here. You got to look left once in a while.
I got to start looking left, right, left, like in school.
I just, for the public purposes, nowhere did I see anything mentioning adults only, that kind of thing, so I just wanted to make sure that people knew.
It's not just adults. So as people enter the cordoned-off area on Main Street and Court, and as well as Roke Block on Main Street, there'll be ID checks. Those individuals are going through TIPS training, so they can properly check IDs. If you're under twenty-one, you can come in, you just won't have an identifier wristband. You have a further wristband identifying a VIP access, which will be through the general area. So whereas it's not over twenty-one, the area, that is, in order to partake in obviously purchasing and consuming alcohol, you must be over twenty-one. Okay? Thank you very much, Chief Mowen. I'm going to bring this to a vote. Or first of all, is there any debate? Any internal debate? None being? I'll bring this to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, abstained, none being? It passes seven-zero. Thank you. Now, we're going to go on to reports. I'd like to start off with, excuse me, one second. The mayor's reports. It's been a kind of an eventful couple of weeks. First of all, I just want to tell everybody on the council and everybody in Auburn, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah. It's a great season. I hope you all enjoy it and spend it with friends and family and think about the meaning of this holiday. Moving on, it's been a couple updates, very important update, Agricultural Committee update. We were going to meet tomorrow. We decided as a committee in our last meeting to go and seek some counsel with the state of Maine Department of Agriculture. We did that with Counselor, Counselor Lasagna's help. We reached out to several members of the Department of Agriculture, forwarded them a copy of our ordinances, both edits and the existing text, to ask for comment, thoughts. It turned into a very eye-opening conversation relatively quickly, whereas a lot of the language in our existing ordinance is not, and Counselor Holly, Lasagna, jump in here at any point in time, it's not up to current modern standards and conformity with both federal and state regulations, which could possibly cause significant issues with a new farmer who's starting out, who's trying to apply for any type of agricultural loan assistance and help. That's something that they check. So we need to make sure our complete ordinance is up to speed with state statutes and federal guidelines. Did I miss anything on that, Counselor Lasagna?
No.
So we've, they asked for several weeks to review this process, and we're not going to rush this. It's all about standard and not to time. So we are now reconvening our meeting on January tenth. Hopefully, we have their comments and suggestions and language changes that really won't affect what we were talking about with income or size of law. It's just really everything else, from livestock densities to how do we use it in best practices, EPA concerns, by January fourth or fifth, so we have a few days to review it before our next meeting. So giving you an update on that. Next meeting, January tenth, five-thirty, at a place yet to be determined within City Hall. As we all know, New Year's Eve is right upon us. I will state yet again that VIP tickets have sold out. That's over three hundred tickets. That's great, great news, and a very early indicator that this is going to be the most fantastic event in Maine on New Year's Eve. So I think it's definitely going to be one that we will talk about happily for the rest of the year until it happens again in 2019, 2020. So I encourage everybody just to come on down. Starts at six, seven. Get some food with the food trucks, enjoy the fireworks at midnight, enjoy the new Auburn 1869 ale, and have a great time. Water filtration, next point. There's been a lot of talk in our city council meetings about water fil, or excuse me, quality of water and the algae that's present within it. Counselor Titus, myself, Mr. Kroll, had a meeting with Auburn Water Department Director, and it was very encouraging to talk about this. We invited him to our January seventh meeting in a workshop. We wanted to have him here tonight, but we had some mandatory workshop items we had to cover, so it just wasn't enough time. The issue is subsiding, but we do need to, and we pass this message along, and I've been in communication with Mayor Bouchard, both by phone and email, about forming a work group, talking in a very open-minded way about how do we attack or address the filtration issue? And look at some modern techniques and science, and look at modern ways to fund it, and try to get ahead of it. I think the analogy that I've used is you don't wait for your car to break down on the side of the road before buying a new one. You be a little proactive and try to get the car ahead of time so you can buy it on your terms at the right cost from the right dealer. So that's what we're going to look at. I'd like us all to keep an open mind on this process as it moves forward over the next, you know, few weeks, months, maybe into a year. But it's something that we should start, and we'd be remiss not to. So more to come on that. Other than that, that's the only updates I have, and I'll turn this over at this point to city council reports. Start over here with Counselor Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow evening at five-thirty at the Auburn Senior Community Center, we have an age-friendly meeting starting at five-thirty. All Auburn residents that are senior or are interested in senior issues are welcome. We're having a mini-Christmas party. We're going to discuss our next steps and how we're going to try to move forward and maybe even try to set some goals. But it's, I'm looking forward to our meeting, and I'm also looking forward to the new year, to a brighter and better future than what we've have today in regards to the senior center and our project.
Thank you. Counselor Lasagna?
Thank you for the update on the, update on the ag committee. I think it, we're really doing our due diligence, and I appreciate the mayor being flexible in terms of the schedule for that. You heard a lot about the school building committee. I have to say that they spent a lot of time thinking about this, and I appreciate that we're at the point now where people in the community can at least get somewhat of an idea of what we're looking at, and also somewhat of a very general idea about what this may cost. I think that'll help us move forward. The Strategic Planning Committee is moving along really well. It's been an interesting process. I think it's since city manager, Kroll, can speak to that. But we had our first meeting of the two subcommittees, the Quality Subcommittee and the Growth Subcommittee, and I think, you know, you start out with these different groups, and they begin to talk, and you can just begin to see them sort of developing their own culture within the committees, and I think as we move ahead, we're really going to be going sort of great guns with this, and I look forward to continuing that. Thank you. Oh, and tomorrow morning at eight AM is the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee. Is that what we're called, Advisory Committee? Okay.
Planning.
Planning Committee, and that has also been extremely well facilitated.
Thank you. Counselor Hayes?
I guess I, as well as several others at the council, did attend the two growth committee and the quality committee. I think we went back and forth, but I was impressed. A lot of good conversation. Everybody seemed to be participating and certainly following the schedule, so I look forward to the other meetings coming up. We do have a, the AbCog meeting coming up on Wednesday, and we'll be attending that. I don't have the agenda before me, so we'll see what comes out of it.
If you could on that, please pass along our thanks to Dina Jackson and staff. She's been extremely valuable to helping Auburn and supports tourism, tourism in general. I had a meeting with her last, last week, and it's, it's always good, and there's always new information to be learned whenever she comes and talks with us, so thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Marijuana Work Group had a meeting last week, and we had pretty lengthy discussion about a couple of key points that council will have a chance to weigh in on. One of them is buffer zones between these operations and drug safety zones and general safety zones, drug-free zones and safety zones, and how that's going to fit. We had very good presentation with the mapping showing what this means and what, you know, having it at a thousand feet, seven fifty, five hundred feet, so it was very good, and we're just going to try and put some more information together on that. As also, we talked about fees and what we think could be projected fees that would help offset the cost of this particular business, and that was very good. Had some feedback from people that are in that business as well. We've been trying to get market back feedback, and I think that's really good to know what's going on out there. Our next, well, actually, the next thing that's going to happen is on January eighth, the planning board will have our draft ordinance to look at and to weigh in on what they think should be there or shouldn't be there and what they feel is going on. We'll have a meeting on January fifteenth, just after that, to look over their recommendations and try to come up with a final draft for, for you all to look at. I think that we're planning to go before council on February eighteenth, it looks like.
It'll be the following week. I think the eighteenth actually is a holiday.
Okay. It'll be the following, following meeting after the eighteenth. Council meeting, okay. And the public hearing first reading will be March fourth, so hopefully we'll have some indication before then, and hopefully have this all buttoned up, so we don't have to do another extension on the moratorium. And this is again, medical marijuana retail. This is not the recreational, adult recreational use ordinance, right? Well, it's going to kind of be involving both, but we're not getting ready. There'll be, there won't be any recreational adult-use marijuana until the state allows that to happen. So we've tried to draft this ordinance so it can work both ways, but it's really intended for the medical retail, which is already in effect right now, but we just want to get our ordinance in place, so. Also, tomorrow night, the Sewer Trustees Meeting will be followed by some budget discussion. That's tomorrow at four at the district office. And then on Wednesday, we have the Water Trustees Meeting. Final conversations on the budget, and then right after that water meeting, which should be around five or five-thirty, there'll be a public hearing on the budget for both the Sewer Department and the Water Department collectively. I mean, everybody will be in the room, but they'll be voting on the budgets there for the annual for the coming year. So that's it.
Counselor Fornier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I previously handed out two packets to counselors, and I know in an attempt to kind of review really quickly for public purposes, since you're just listening in or viewing, one of them has to do with school committee agenda items, if you can refer to that. Both of these come from the December fifth school committee meeting. There are new high school space allocation requirements necessary for the new building, but on top of that, what's required is two positions, a computer science teaching position and a substance abuse counselor. There are also thirteen, as I mentioned earlier, thirteen career and technical satellite programs and positions, which I, I find to be very necessary. I would still like to have some assurance that there would, we would be dealing with agriculture in some way, because that's not listed in that, in that listing, although I've asked for that. Another possible program transfer would be Franklin Alternative School and the Students of Success Program, which is SOS. The new high school project updates, there will be subcommittee work going on on December, well, on December eleventh, we've, we've already had a building committee meeting in January twenty-third. Please keep in mind that January twenty-third will be a public forum. And there are additional space needs that were discussed for the Washburn East Auburn Community School, for Fairview School, space needs that are needed there, Auburn Middle School, Edward Little High School, the current one. So there are some space needs, so if you refer to that, you'll see what those needs are. And as far as the Park Avenue School, it was mentioned by Superintendent Grandin that there was a need for two classrooms. When the school was built those years back, they didn't spring for two more rooms because of the cost, but now they need the two more rooms. So if anyone who's been to the Park Avenue School, you, you can see that from here, approaching the Park Avenue School, it's to the right, and it's sort of like an L, an empty L-shaped, and that's where the two, two built, two classrooms will be included and built. And all of that is city taxpayer money funded by taxpayers. And there, there's a Vision 2030 final draft that I included in this, and it's not a, it's And there, there's a Vision 2030 final draft that I included in this and it's not a, it's not, has not been approved, but if you see anything that you would like to suggest, please let me know or the superintendent know because we will be voting on this at our next meeting. And the other packet is a lot thicker, it's the Fall Data Review. And this one speaks to the fall assessments that have taken place. There are two types of assessments that take place. One is the STAR assessments and the STAR assessments is, it's a universal screening. It happens, occurs three times a year and it's used to identify at-risk students and it's used for intervention planning and for progress monitoring. And this one, then you can sort students out in terms of do they need Title I assistance, do they need special ed, any number of things that you can do to provide assistance for them. And I'll let you read all of this other stuff. It's really very intriguing and informative. But the next section, the last half of it, is regards to the MEA results. And the MEA results are very different from STAR because they are a system that all the state of Maine uses to gauge our, measure our students against one another in terms of, you know, community-like schools to see how we compare with them. And they measure math, English language, arts, literacy, English proficiency, and it's grades three to eight. And of those, as you go through, you will see that we, Auburn, Auburn is below the state average in, in just about all of, all of, it's below state average in English language arts, below state average in math and in other subjects as well. There are some highlights that are good highlights, but what this tells us is that we need to continue to look at our programming and what really impacts that is that we have over a 40% mobility rate. So the students that we have today, 40% of them have come from someplace else. But that's no different than any other community. I mean, we're a mobile society, so when students come to us, we take them as they are and we get going with them and teach what they need to learn and move from there. But I still feel that we have a lot of work to do in raising the aspirations of our kids and, and getting our grades at least at grade level compared to the state. If we can do that, that would be, that would be good. Because the state average is low as well.
Councilor Forney, there's several things could you take to the next school board meeting? Just talking about their proposed need for more classroom space?
Yes.
What we'd like to see is what the population is for the other schools not mentioned, Walton, Sherwood Heights, et cetera, Washburn?
Yes. Right.
What their population is, what the forecast for population and all these, all their elementary schools will be over the next five to 10 years?
Right.
And also I'd like a follow-up on how many superintendent agreements there are with children from outside of district within Auburn? I do know of a few that are in before and after-school care in Auburn. They're not residents or taxpayers of Auburn?
Right.
So I'd like to look at that?
Yep.
So is there anything else in the council to bring back on school? I mean, there's test scores, yes, but primarily, because I, I sense that we'll be getting CIP requests for school build-outs.
Yes, exactly. That's what I'm getting at.
And if Washburn has capacity, or Walton, excuse me, Walton has capacity or Sherwood Heights has capacity, I'd like to look at redistricting more so than, you know, building out Park Ave or Fairview.
I have a question.
Just examples, yes.
Did you say 40% were?
Of our students are, have moved from someplace else.
Yeah.
Nationally, it's 50% of the people that live in Auburn are from away.
Mm-hmm.
So 40% doesn't sound too bad.
No, it doesn't. So there's a plus right there.
Well, we have certain schools, like, I mean, the last time we studied it, Washburn, for example, had like a 60 or 65% turnover rate in a given year, which is a huge barrier for education because, and I think we had put a program in place, maybe needed an update on it, where we were helping folks that had rent problems, that helped them stay in that area so they didn't have to move out. I don't know if that's done any good or not, but I know there's a lot of barriers that the school has to put up with.
Right.
But I'd like to see, I'm looking at like the graduation rate back to 2014. We've actually gone backwards.
Yes, we have.
I don't know if there's anything that goes back beyond that because I know that things like laptop computers and a lot of kind of programs that were supposed to help the graduation rate in the end.
Correct.
And if those haven't happened, I mean, we'd need to seriously look at those, but that again is not our position, but, you know, that shows quite a, you know, quite a few years there and we're going backwards in graduation rates, so.
I would appreciate if, you know, any of council, counselors have questions and or concerns, please send them to me via email and I'll collect those and pass them on. And just to be more specific, the 40% that I mentioned, this is of the current eighth grade, which is my son's, my grandson's grade. His grade, 40% of them did not start school in Auburn. But that's, you know, I don't look at that as an excuse. I, I look at that as a condition. We get kids from all over the place, all shapes and sizes. Parents send us the best kids they've got and our job is to educate them the best way we can. So at the end, you will see some next steps, you know, in terms of the response to the STAR and the MEA results. What is, what is suggested to help raise those scores and, and meet the needs of students? And if you have, especially in this area, if you have some suggestions to meet this need, I would love to hear those and we can get those to the superintendent.
I will say that I believe mass customized learning and proficiency-based learning, if you look as a layman, which I am, and you're looking at the trend of when this has started and what graduation rates are looking like in test scores, I think you could tie in directly the fact that it's not working.
Mm-hmm.
And I think all we had to do is listen to our, our parents, our residents say it, and they have said it and they still say it. So it's something to be taken back to. Cause and effect, cause and effect.
Exactly.
One thing I would like to bring up is the topic of Franklin School, Franklin Alternative High School. It was mentioned during the superintendent's presentation. I know there's a proposal out there to include Franklin Alternative School within the new high school plan and build-out. I can see both sides of this. I understand where the city, or excuse me, the school department, the administration's coming from, and the benefits it would do for the building as a whole and the population and still try to meet the needs. I can also stand, understand from the many residents that have contacted me and other counselors too, of the need and desire to keep Franklin as a separate standalone. I'd like to explore that a little bit more and I think there's a very, there's a lot of facets to that discussion. So I'd like us all to keep kind of an open mind on that one and look at the pros and cons along with the school department and funnel any, any type of comments or remarks both ways. School back to our constituents and constituents back to school.
We'll be voting on that in two days. So if any counselors know of any voting on whether or not to include this in the plan because what will happen is if we vote for it, then it'll be included in the plan for the new school. And if we don't vote for it, then it will not be included in the plan for the new school. But if there are, you know, I know there, I've been getting a lot of emails, a lot of phone calls from, you know, a lot of people and many of them who have attended Franklin, so I'm trying to do my, my homework. And so far, I'm not hearing anyone saying, let's go there. They're all saying, hang on to Franklin School, this is where we want to be, this is where we feel comfortable, this is where we feel accepted, we don't feel stigmatized, we, we have, they still hold to the same rigor academically that the high school does, so they're not watered down. The program that they have is not watered down. When I went for my visit there, I was so, I was so taken aside as to the, you know, the demeanor of the students. They were calm, they were polite, they made eye contact, you know, the teachers were doing a fabulous job. And that takes, what I saw was it takes a lot of manipulation with, you know, making deals with different people, with different agencies in the area to make things happen for the kids because they want to be, they want to become who they want to become. And it's, it's not that simple. It, it requires some really innovative ideas to get them to stay engaged, to get them to be really into their education and know that they're going to be at an end result of where they want to be. I had a letter from one person who was a graduate from Franklin. Now she is working in a very prestigious position and she got her education there because she did not, she did not feel welcome at the other location. She felt stigmatized, she felt bullied. So, I mean, we need to, we need to talk about that stuff.
I, I think we do and unfortunately, there's only a couple of days. I really, I thought and I wish there'd be a little bit more time. I will say that there's, you know, as, as my rep, my representative on the school committee, well, let's weigh the pros and cons. I do know there is a pretty significant financial savings by rolling Franklin in, having it separate, but the same.
Right.
There's also some new opportunities and variables with regards to continuing technological education, programs that are going to be available right next door to them versus in Lewiston, so could be in Auburn. I think there's some different variables there that we need to look at. We'll feed back to the, to the city council on kind of what we, we look at together. But right now, I know it's probably not the norm and I don't want to get into an open debate, real, real, real quick, is there any thoughts from any of you? Do you all have a quick opinion on this? I'd like to, you know, she, my, Councilor Forney, you might be the mayor's rep, but I do value your opinion on this topic. Councilor Hayes?
I guess, two questions. Question with respect to this topic, is there any ramifications with respect to funding from the state with respect to the, the school that we're anticipating? The second, I think, we talked about Park, Park Avenue and it's not a complete new classrooms. The classrooms, essentially the space is there as I understand it. So it's really just the build-out of that classroom interior.
Right.
That the, the cubic footage is built around.
It's not the interior, it's jutting it out. They, as it was described, that little L-shaped, that opening area would be two classrooms there.
And that is probably a conversation. Thank you for the heads up on that. Let's get some more information, but a CIP. But on the specific topic of Franklin School, Franklin Alternative High School, Councilor Zonia?
So I want to say, let's make sure that we don't uncouple the student from the physical space. You know, I think we were very excited about a new high school. There's been a lot of conversation about it, what the physical space would look like, but I don't hear a lot of conversation about how are we making sure that teaching and education will be supported in this space? And I know we've thought about Franklin, they'll have a separate entrance and all of that, but I do hear what the students are saying about that situation. I do know students who have succeeded there and I'm not sure that a separate entrance will allow them what they really need. And I think, Councilor Forney, you're talking about the amount of social services and supports that these students need. I haven't heard any conversation about that. Is that going to be provided at the new high school?
Councilor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that we should listen to the students that have gone to it in the past and the present. I think if we move them up to the new high school, it's going to add even more to the stigma that they already feel that they are under right now because they're still going to be kept separate and probably equal, but if they get a separate entrance, a separate this, separate that, it's back to the Stone Age when we, people, different classes rode the bus. One class sat front and the other had to sit in the back. And I'm afraid that's going to be that way at the new high school. At least they're free to be who they want to turn out to be at Franklin.
This is the same, this is a Jim Crow conversation in 1960s in Alabama.
Right.
Separate but equal. Oh God, that gives me the goosebumps.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Young?
We discussed this at the, at the building committee and the superintendent of schools didn't recommend it. She, she showed us the figures and it said the impact of having them at the high school really didn't justify having them there. The program was, in her opinion, was better where it was.
Okay.
So it's, it's not, you know, the, the numbers are so small.
And Councilor Forney, we're going to, we'll stop with the debate. So, okay, that, that input, thank you very much. We're going to look at it. We have 48 hours. So thank you. We're going to move on. Councilor Walker?
Thank you. I'd, I'd like to ask you, where do we find this information or where does the public find all this information?
The public will find it under the school, the Auburn School Committee and look under the title of School Committee Agenda Items, December 5th. It, it should be found under the December 5th and if not, call Roz Walton. And I thank her publicly for this because she put these together for, for me, for all of you. So under the December 5th minutes. But, but actually, it'll look a little different than this. So I would, I would contact Roz Walton and ask that she sends something to them electronically.
I'd like to suggest if you're going to have this information for Ros to read, that you make sure that Sue has it ahead of time. She'll put it in the package that would be able to be seen by everybody. Am I correct?
Yes.
It, it just makes, it would get your information out the way that you're seeing it here and not diluted with something that isn't quite the same because I'm sure people heard you, but there may be a lot of people that want to read it.
Oh, they did, they did.
And that's a, that's a whole different ballpark, you know.
Right.
Okay, I, I would like to touch on the age-friendly meeting in January. That has been moved to the 8th and the 22nd because New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, of course, is on the 1st. So we won't be meeting there on that Tuesday because it's New Year's Day. So we've moved it to January 8th and January 22nd, so there's two weeks between them two meetings. Then we go back to the first Tuesday of the month and the third Tuesday of the month. I'd like to just state that Rolie's has a meeting tomorrow night at 6 o'clock for the United New Auburn Association. And the 27th, we will be at 63 Congregational Church for the Neighborhood Watch Meeting. I'd welcome all, everyone and all of you to come to either one or both if you'd like to be there. And of course, age-friendly tomorrow night at 5:30 at the senior center. So hopefully you can make it to all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Young?
Yes, we had our Great Falls Advisory Committee meeting and it was very interesting. We, we discussed goals and in the discussion, we kind of noticed that the committee is actually different than when the bylaws were actually written. The committee doesn't advise much. I mean, we don't prepare a budget at the, the franchise fees that come to the city go to the IT department and then they're, they're spent there. We did discuss a little bit about programming and, and it was brought up that, that the Facebook page and the YouTube channel should, should point to the, to the Great Falls TV cable and the cable should point to the available on Facebook cross-promotion. It was my impression that more is done on one side than the other and one form of media is, is regarded more favorable than another. And the prejudice of the, that we all have with an IT department probably favors their, their form of social media more than the broadcasting. And we are trying to develop a way that we can measure, so I just speak to you out there right now, if you're listening to my voice right now, now contact us and say that you enjoy listening to us live or rebroadcasting. Or if you're listening to us on Facebook or YouTube or whatever, now contact us and let us know that. But we know if you're listening on Facebook and, and that and YouTube because we got a way to measure that, types of likes and, and counts and things like that. But we don't get it from, from cable TV. I, I don't know if everybody's going to cut their cord and start listening on YouTube or their cell phones or whatever, but if you're doing that, we, we know in the next five years, things may change. And it'd be nice to know with messages coming out. Is it coming out through the airwaves or the, or the cable or what? And stay tuned. Any questions?
Questions? Councilor Walker?
I'm still getting people that ask, why are we staying with 1301 and 1302? I thought we were going to Augusta to, to get this back to regular channel stations where people can find us and, and listen to us. What is going on with that?
Some, that's a good question. Some cities are fighting this in the courts. Auburn has taken a stand, not the advisory board because we haven't voted on that, but the, the people that do our negotiations for us have not, we, well, it would be up to the city council, I guess, to, to vote if we wanted to, and the time to do that would have been several months ago, do that. Right, city manager?
Yes, and there is a legislative effort underway.
But we're not part of that.
We're involved in it in the sense that we're monitoring what's going on and it's happening at the federal level as well as at state level.
Well, would it help if we, as a council, said we'd like to, you know, move our opinion along because I get people all the time saying, we can't find you anywhere. Where, you know, where has this been moved?
Right.
And we've done a lousy job ourself here announcing that it was moved, it was on Channel 10 or whatever the channel was now, for years and years. And then we went and moved it and so many people have just lost contact with us.
It's happened to many communities, but if the council directed the staff to work on this at the legislature, we certainly could do that.
But we can, we can put links on our, our website, but that's assuming that people have access to the internet and they may not. And... And it's the idea that people are going to all get computers. Well, I'm sure there are people out there. Please call us and tell us, you don't have a computer, this is the only way that you get the message, and you, you like to get the message this way. It's a nice, clear picture. It's not, you don't have a little thing going around and around.
Can I recommend a no, a no-cost solution? City tax bills come out twice a year? Once a year? Once a year, that's right, once a year. I do believe in the invoicing process, you have a little bit of real estate on the bottom of that tax invoice, or on the backside of that. Could we put a message to turn into channels X, Y, X and Y on the first and third Mondays for city council meetings? Is there publicized or aired live?
Well, there's a lot of other things that are covered under that channel, too, so.
Well, yes, I know, but you have a very limited amount of real estate on a tax bill. It's something that every resident receives, so.
If our state and county and whoever else is going to go to court and fight this, I would think we would want to be on board with that. So why don't we make that motion and at least get the city to get on board?
Okay. We'll get a resolve on January 7th to get on board of that. Okay? I know it's being worked out at the MMA, LPC level, too, so. But there is, I, we're not recommending doing anything now, but there is some real estate there.
We're in the process of bringing those in-house and designing them, redesigning them, so this would be the time to do that.
And maybe we can get together offline or out of meeting to talk about just a, an empty spot within the invoice, maybe one or two lines of text that could be utilized for a message that should be determined. Okay?
Good idea.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few comments. First, I know that there've been some councilors, as well as the mayor, have been interested in what's happening regarding a couple of properties. One at 65 Pleasant Street, which burned, and the property next to it. I met last Friday with Rick Whiting, who's the Executive Director of the Auburn Housing Authority, to talk with him about it. The Auburn Housing Authority is in the process of buying both properties. They, at this point in time, plan to utilize the properties for parking. They are primarily interested in parking for the Spring Street project, but they, and Rick wanted me to relay this to the, to all of you, that they are interested in working with the businesses along that corridor to provide parking for customers, which I thought was great. And Rick is very interested in participating, cooperating with the city as he moves forward on that. I also want to mention, in terms of legislative delegation, the City of Lewiston is meeting with their delegation, as you know. I've talked with Phil about doing a similar thing here. The Maine Municipal Association has already put forward a legislative agenda, which we provided some information on, can provide more in the future. It includes things like trying to restore municipal revenue sharing, back to full funding. And we will work on trying to put a meeting together with the legislative delegation, and, and we'll work with them during the course of the year. We have had meetings intermittently with members of the delegation over the last few months. Also, I, I want to compliment Jill and her team on the auditorium report that was presented earlier in workshop. That's a big deal, as you can appreciate. Thank you very much, Jill. And please pass that on to your team, all the work that you've done. And in the same vein, I'd like to also compliment Jody DeRisco and the work that she's done, the tax-acquired properties, along with the strong support and involvement from Jill, as well as Nancy Bosse, Bosse, and also Eric Cousins has been involved in that, and a group of folks from the city. I'm very pleased to see the work they're doing on that. I think we are making good progress. And I also want to mention, about this time last year, there was a waiver that was approved by the council for the folks that purchased the former St. Louis church. That waiver is coming up in January, and I will be coming back to you at the next meeting on that issue with an action item for you to consider regarding that, and happy to answer any questions you might have, or provide additional information to you regarding that issue. And I'd like to ask Phil, it's already been mentioned by Counselor Lozania and Counselor Hayes about the strategic planning, but I'd like to ask Phil Crowell about what's happening with the strategic planning process, to enhance a little bit on what's already been said. Phil has been doing an outstanding job with the support of, of several folks, including Liz Allen and Jody DeRisco, and also Rachel and Rosemary and other folks. Phil?
Thank you, City Manager. Just a few things Counselor Lozania covered, captured a lot of what we've already done. I would just like to update that we have over 90 participants that are involved in this process. And we're, with the launch and with our first meeting, we've had a great response. Nearly about 80% of those who agreed to be participating are showing up and coming, and, and very much involved. There's great conversations that are taking place. As a result of this process, one document that I think is going to be really helpful for us in this process, but also for the council to look at, and that's the Comp Plan Progress Report. It's a very different way to look at a comp plan. It's very interactive as you go through. We were able to do an overview on that at the subcommittee meeting. That'll be coming out to you in the next couple of days. It'll also be available online, where residents can take a look at the comp plan, to see where we are with the different strategies that were laid out in the comp plan, what's been accomplished, what's still being worked on, what maybe hasn't even been, been looked at, at this point. The, what's also linked with that comp plan are, you know, over the years, we looked at over the last 10 years, all the studies and reports that the city councilors have budgeted, paid for, or done as a result of a community or state effort. And we've linked all those studies in where they correlate with the comp plan. So as you're going through and you're looking at natural resources, if there was a study that was done relating to Mount Appetite, you can click on that link. The most recent study that the council funded for sports tourism, that study is on there. When you go onto rec, you can hit that link. What also is available on those is an executive summary. So if you don't want to see the whole report, we've taken pieces of that report out. You can see what's in there. Look at the executive summary. If that's what you're looking for, you can then dig a little deeper. So Rosemary Mojer, who's with our GIS manager, has done an outstanding job with that report. That progress report will be the template for when we move forward with the, the next comp plan, which will be coming up soon. But it'll also be the same template that we use for the strategic planning. The other document that's going to be coming out, where the, the subcommittees will be working on over the next few weeks, and that's mapping assets. I think having a good understanding in our community what our assets are, where they're located, who to contact, that'll be a great living document that we'll be able to use and make available. Our next meeting for the subcommittees will be January 3rd, 6:00 PM, here in the council chambers, and also in the community room. And we look forward to the work that's going to be taking place. City Manager, I would just add one more piece that I think we didn't mention, was that we were fortunate to have three police officers that participated in the Rees Across America effort that took place. They escorted the, the trucks from Maine to Arlington National Cemetery. They assisted in laying the rees on the headstones of all of our fallen soldiers in Arlington. And great commitment from them on their days off, and also with the union assisting in the, some of the costs that took place with having them participate. But I think it's great that Auburn was involved in that. These officers agreed to, for that commitment. I saw the truck had come back today, so they made it home safely. But what a great thing that Auburn was able to be involved in that.
Thank you very much. City Manager? I'd like to move on to the finance report. Ms. Seisman? We're going to make payroll?
Yeah, we're good.
Good to go.
You have the November finance report in front of you. We are five months into this fiscal year already. The average percentage is about 41.7, if you break the budget down by 12, which on some, some line items, you can do that, others you can't. But it's a, it's a benchmark to look at. Revenues at this time are at 50.03% on the city side. And the main reason for that variance is, of course, property taxes are due in two installments. So we collect 50% or, or more. Right now, we're actually at 51.5% at the end of November. So we're a little bit ahead of where we were last year at this time. The other two large revenues that we collect, excise tax, we are continuing to outmar, outmatch our, my estimates, and I've raised my estimates every year for the last four years, while we're still ahead of those projections. And state revenue sharing is actually higher than where we were last year at this time. We're about $80,000 higher. On the expenditure side, we have a, we're a little bit higher than last year, which matches the revenues. So debt service is higher than last year. That's due to interest being higher on the newer debt that we have. So when you bring on new debt, the interest is higher than what you're paying off. So that's, that's one reason there. Public Works is, is above last year, mainly due to some of the winter road maintenance that they had to do in the month of November, and getting prepared for winter is a timing, as well as the same thing with LA 911. It's a timing in there, subsidy payments.
Very good. Are there any questions for the council at this point? Counselor Titus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else? Couple of questions, make it real quick, hopefully. I was looking at the EMS revenues, appear to be, I think, down. Maybe they're not. But to me, it was looked like we're down at, we're at 436 collected so far on this report. Our goal is 1.2 million, so it seems like we're a little bit behind there. But I was also looking at total billed was like 800, 986,000 before adjustments.
Okay, we're actually, as far as collected compared to last year, we're 41,000 ahead of last year.
Okay. And that 436, that's collected, or is that just booked? That's collected?
Yes.
Okay. So it goes back to my point, are we writing off on a monthly basis now, or are we waiting till?
We are. And if you look at the EMS summary of activity report.
Yep.
There's one that starts with the beginning balance. It shows new charges, payments, adjustments, and write-offs.
Yep.
So that'll show you each month.
That's reflected in that 436?
We, it has nothing to do with the 436. The 436 is actual dollars we've collected to date.
Okay. It's like I was saying, like I said, last year, we had to take a substantial hit against that account. Do you think we're going to be doing that again this year?
No.
Or we're doing it now, so it won't be a hit?
We do it. Last year, we were, we were playing catch-up.
Yeah.
This year, we're actually maintaining.
Now, one question I noticed, and maybe this has been an increase or a decrease, but I, maybe I'm just noticing that between Medicare and Medicaid, substantial amount of our revenue approaching 75%. Is that trending up, do you think, since we've taken on transport? Well, like Medicare is almost 60%, and then Medicaid is 16%.
I think it's, it's pretty, pretty normal. That's about pretty much what it has been all along.
Are we getting more or less payments? I know they always are adjusting what they pay.
They always adjust.
Right.
I mean, when we sign on to take Medicare and Medicaid, then we have to accept what they, what they pay.
But they haven't decreased what they pay from already, what's already?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. I just think that that's something they've always done, is tried to cut back.
I can find out.
And less and less. When I see 75% of our revenue on that, maybe I could think, you know, just to find out.
Yep.
The other question I had, too, related to Economic Development Department, the spending there. I know that there's a lot of money there that's kind of like CBDG funding or something. Is that, it's in that account, expense account? Because we forecast to spend 1.4 million. We're at 422,000. And one of the things that I noticed in the audit was that there was a lot of extra money left over from economic development that was unspent. And I also understood that was because a lot of that was federal funding or CBDG funding that we couldn't spend?
I think one of the other larger ones, too, is we authorized, I don't have it in front of me, but we authorized 100,000 to go over to Community Concepts that they didn't utilize, so we took that back in, and it was budgeted for, so there's probably 200,000 there, I'd say.
So I guess what my point was, is we're almost halfway in the season. If we're not spending the money we need to, like we wanted to build this department, we want to have a good marketing approach, I don't know if that's part of economic development, things that we should be doing that we're not, or are we just going to end up at the end of the year with another surplus?
Usually what I provide, that I bring with me to meetings, and I knew the first time I didn't bring one I'd need it, is Rhonda does a spreadsheet that shows where we're at appropriation control report. And in that, she takes the larger items that aren't symmetrically taken, you know, once every month for 12 months taken out of there, to show the large expenditures, that if they were drawn down, what percentage we're at. So any given month, we're within the percentage of that, of that percent of the month of the year. So we're not far off. I usually have Rhonda do that, I just don't happen to have one in front of me. I will have one emailed out tomorrow, though.
Yeah, just sorry, because I say, I know this council wants to spend the money that that's going to go towards good economic development, and if we're not doing what we should do, that's what my concern is.
Yeah, you won't see us being far off. We'll be right in line with the numbers. The only one we'll be off on is that we had a, an opening in employment, so that one area is going to show a balance in there because of that opening.
All right. Any other questions from the council on budgets? None? Okay. I'll adjourn a motion to accept a place and file the November 2018 Monthly Finance Report.
I'll move.
Counselor Hayes, one second.
Second.
Thank you for Counselor Fornier. Show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Staying? None being? Pass to 7-0. I want to open this up to the last open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council on any issue directly related to city business, which is not on the agenda. I would ask that you state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. I want to do something a little unorthodox at this point. Is there Mr. Smith in the audience? Colby Smith. Could you please step forward to the table? I have a pleasure to know this young gentleman and his parents. Go Class of 92, go Eddies. And I don't want to put you on the spot or embarrass you, but I'd love it if you could tell the council why you're here tonight. But you have to speak into the microphone. Don't worry, we tell that to everybody.
I'm here tonight for a communication merit badge for Boy Scouts. It's an Eagle-required merit badge that you need to do. One day, I hope to get to Eagle, so this really helped.
Outstanding. What school do you go to?
Fairview School.
What do you like to do in the winter?
Ski.
Yes. Outstanding. Could you come up here for me? Okay. Is there anybody else in the member of the public? Just right around here. Anybody else in the, any other member of the public that would like to speak? Daddy might want to get a picture of this. You're going to end this public session, okay?
Yep.
I'm going to say, I will now close the open session, and what are you going to do?
Smack the table.
Smack the table, okay? I'll now close the open session.
There you go. It's easy, so I can be mad at you.
Very good.
Standing.
Good job.
Moving on, we have an executive session to discuss a real estate matter pursuant to one MRSA, Section 405, 6C. Do I have a motion?
So, I can.
I have a motion from Counselor Fornier, and a second from Counselor Gary. All those in favor?
That was Walker.
Walker. All those in favor? Opposed? Staying? Pass to 7-0. We're not an executive session. Y'all got to stay.
Gary's voice went down.
Voice went down.
Have three when I called you up said I need you now 'cause I'm losing patience. But for you were knocking on my door. I said love is a two-way road, he don't care no more, am I going crazy? Needed you just to help forget it all. And it was easier, you put the records on to replay. Danced till we couldn't see straight, till the morning came along. Don't need the weekend, we don't wait until... Have three when I called you up said I need you now 'cause I'm losing patience. But for you were knocking on my door. I said love is a two-way road, he don't care no more, am I going crazy? Needed you just to help forget it all. And it was easier, you put the records on to replay. Danced till we couldn't see straight, till the morning came along. Don't need the weekend, we don't wait until the evening. We don't need to find a reason to turn it up and sing along. 'Cause that's what friends are for. 'Cause that's what friends are for. 'Cause that's what friends are for. Have three when I called you up said I need you now 'cause I'm losing patience. But for you were knocking on my door. I said love is a two-way road, he don't care no more, am I going crazy? Needed you just to help forget it all. And it was easier, you put the records on to replay. Danced till we couldn't see straight, till the morning came along. Don't need the weekend, we don't wait until the evening. We don't need to find a reason to turn it up and sing along. 'Cause that's what friends are for. 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 Have three when I called you up said I need you now 'cause I'm losing patience. But for you were knocking on my door. I said love is a two-way road, he don't care no more, am I going crazy? Needed you just to help forget it all. And it was easier, you put the records on to replay. Danced till we couldn't see straight, till the morning came along. Don't need the weekend, we don't wait until the evening. We don't need to find a reason to turn it up and sing along. 'Cause that's what friends are for. 'Cause that's what friends are...
Um, well, I mean four if they all vote in favor.
Y'all wanna go home? Okay, Brian, hit it. Thank you, we're back. I now declare the council out of executive session. I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion for Councilor Lozonia, and a second for, excuse me, Councilor Titus. By voice, vote, all those in favor of adjourning.
Yay.
Opposed, abstain, the ayes have it, we are now adjourned.
Ooh, early tonight.